August 8th, 2019. Thank you all for coming. I will accept the motion.
So.
And agenda, is there a second? Second. Any favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, first, I would like to tell you all, again, thank you all for being here. This is the first public hearing on the senior center. And this meeting will continue, will go on until 8:30, we'll have another public hearing that we have to start on time. This meeting will in fact be continued. There's so much information, you all have information and concerns, as does the board. So, this is how it's going to run. It will be the presentation from the presenters, from the senior center. Then questions from the board, and we may have questions that we would like to fold into bands, but primarily I want to hear from you all. Okay? So, we shall begin. Who's in charge here? Who's the spokesperson?
I'm going to start off.
Okay, and if you can't enough identify yourself, and you have to make sure that people can hear you. Okay? Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Surby. I'm one of the Vertix companies, we're in Oakham, Oregon. And I'd like to introduce myself.
Shh. Yeah, I'm here.
One, two. How's that?
Uh, uh.
Let's try it again. My name is Steve Surby. I'm one of the Vertix companies, we're in Oakham, Oregon. I'd like to initially have everyone here outside introduce themselves.
David Archer, project engineer. Tariya Brown, coastal engineering, civil engineer. Rachel Young, architect.
Phil Vorman, architect.
Linda Hayes, assistant director of the SCIL.
Thank you. I've been able to see the center been going on as a project in town for a number of years. Vertix started in March of last year. PHA essentially started in August of last year. The scope expanded from an original standalone senior center, and went to a new senior center for renovation of the recreation gym building, including driveways. And is now currently a senior center with MAB and maintenance modifications to the recreation center gym building. During the time that we did our studies, we were doing using the old gate school as the senior center. That became a cross issue. So that was not the direction going. The next iteration was carrying down the gate school and building senior center to complement of the B wing. That was also not something that the town wanted to go in for. We just wanted the B wing and we're still to make that go in. So we currently have the senior center located in the northwest corner of the gate school. That was decided back in February of this year. And then was with a modification to the recreation centers. And those multiple iterations of design for the gate school property was developed through that from town boards, committees, county departments, and input from town homeowners and residents. There were four public information sessions, three in April and one and two in March and on the day. And then just before, it was a special town meeting on the 15th, and the ballot vote on the 18th, which at that time was already passed, and was subsequently counted. The initial submission for the major site plan review was again in May, with amendment beginning in June. And since that time, we've received comments from several engineers on the site plan, actually two, Vanessa Associates on the traffic report, comments from the designer review committee, sewer division, traffic rules and regulations team, and we received five brothers' letter of advice. We have repeated responses back to the planning board on the 27th, July 1st, July 25th, and just recently, the 7th, in the parking lot building. We're here today to present what we have as the current site management time group. Additional comments and address, and in the hopes of receiving an approval or additional approval of the bylaws. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to you to a party and give the presentation.
Let me make a quick introduction of the site plan, and then we'll get into the civil engineering scope, we'll go into the traffic area, and then we'll go into the technical design responding to those questions. We have on the right side of the screen, it says A Wing, that's a gymnasium as Steve mentioned, renovations to the roof, having had accessibility improvements to your elevator in that building. This is the B wing, which is where we originally put the building. And then this is the C wing, the post 1950s type building is clearly different than the rest of the structure where the senior center is located today. This is a axonometric bird's eye view, the First Parish church, the gate's B wing, the gymnasium, and then the C wing over here. And this is shown in order to show you the site plan. And I'll just make a quick change. The B wing, the C wing gets replaced by the new building. Relationship with the church, the driveway coming in, parking lot for 70 cars, the gym, and the A wing of the gate school remains unchanged, goes as occupied by the recreation department today. There's also in the scheme, a new parking lot at the east end of the site. Today, there's a driveway in front of the historic houses and the well. And that driveway is taken out. The well will remain as part of the site plan. We can go into the civil engineering scope and show you.
Good evening, Tariya, the ground with coastal engineering. So I'll briefly bring you through, this is the demolition plan that's before you. On this plan, we can see on the left-hand side is the C wing that will be removed as part of the project. Also, we'll be removing two perpents that presently exist today. We have the one that is in the front of the gates school that is a curb cut onto First Parish Road. That will come out, as well as the curb cut that is currently in the intersection with Hudson Road and First Parish Road. We'll also be removing that loop drive that currently exists today that is around the central grid. As part of the demolition, before any work starts, there will be a stormwater pollution prevention plan that's prepared and submitted to EPA to make sure there's no offsite runoff concerns and other contractors adhering to the strip measures that are up there again to prevent some from moving offsite and control runoff by sector and structure. This here before you is the engineering site plan. So the topography on the site, when we start with the left-hand side of the screen here, the western side of the site, the topography in that area ranges from elevation about 117 down at the corner of the property at First Parish Road and the newly proposed curb cut down in that location. From there, it goes up to about elevation 122, which is going to be up near where the existing sports fields are now and also the existing school building. Runoff from this area generally during existing conditions flows towards First Parish Road and enters into the existing drainage systems that are in the room today. This watershed that this runoff moves towards is a sensitive watershed. Therefore, this area is also in a low use of protection district. As such, we're proposing three different stormwater management systems that will include best management practices that will provide enhanced water quality treatment, and also infiltration to allow for reduction of volume of runoff during rainwater, and then also peak. The three locations for the drainage systems are going to be in this location here, up to the north, and then there's a third one just in the north of the new senior center facility. So, over here on the eastern portion of the site, there's actually a ridge in the topography. So the majority of runoff in this area actually heads towards the drainage systems in Hudson Road. In this location, we're proposing a new stormwater management system for the new area. We're also reducing the overall amount of impervious coverage by removing the loop drive that's in front of the school today. So, between all of those measures, this redevelopment greatly improves our water quality treatment and then also our reduction of runoff volume and flow. Also, as part of the redevelopment project, we're proposing new sewer connections for the new building to the existing sewer main that's located in First Parish Road. And we're also proposing a grease trap that will serve for the new building. And these are shown from this facility. The new building will also have two new water services. One's going to be a fire service with sprinklers, and then the other will be for potable water. Electric, gas utilities, cable TV will all also come in from First Parish Road.
Good evening, everyone. I'm with Parks Department, working through the threat of the segment of public site and surrounding network, looking at access, circulation within the site from the senior center and existing uses on the eastern side of Hudson, and from the state. So we did site observations on two different days out there. Our primary purposes was to capture speed data along the Hudson Road where those existing and proposed driveways were located, as well as a street study along First Parish Road, where the new driveways proposed relatively across from the church. From those speed studies, we analyzed an 85% speed, which is then used as the design speed for looking at site lines from and approaching driveways to see if people entering and exiting the facility will have an adequate amount of site line to make a maneuver without causing interference of the primary roadway. So we found the 85% speed on First Parish Road out in front of the site to be 38 in the westbound direction and 40 miles per hour in the eastbound direction. We were a little surprised at how high that is compared to the speed limit on the road. That's confirmed by the local crews. There's also actually no closing signs on that part, so it's kind of a factor to look at. So we'll get into a little bit about what we recommend relative to that in a minute. If you move farther east, you'll encounter the Amherst Road, First Parish Road, with a 35 mile per hour speed limit. So those travel speeds that were observed are a little more natural for those people to work with. Hudson was a little bit more difficult to capture a speed study on. We usually try to get at least 40 vehicles to do the speed study after sitting there for a little over a half hour and heading vehicles to the right. So we have a captured speed on Hudson, about 30 miles per hour, slowing obviously to the stop as it approaches the intersection. And as people are turning from both Bieber Dam and First Parish onto Hudson, they're in a very slow 50 mile per hour, and then they start to accelerate as they move along. So both driveways were set with site lines relative to those streets. The distance from the parking lot on Hudson, there's clear visibility to the intersection, which is adequate for the storms, as I mentioned, as people turn from Bieber Dam and First Parish. The driveway that's proposed on First Parish Road, caused from the church, felt just shy of that proposed before the 85% speed captured. But we're fairly confident that we did post a speed limit sign out there, imposed some driver feedback signs, and possibly reduce speed ahead as you travel westbound. You could bring those down, the stopping set distance is adequate for speeds up to 35 miles per hour. Given the configuration of the intersection at First Parish Road with Hudson, we had recommendations that the driveway that currently exits into that intersection could be moved. As you can see, that has been incorporated. That driveway had the worst visibility pulling out and further complicated this intersection that already has some awkward geometry. So, we also wanted to look at that intersection, though not specifically part of the overall site. It does lie on the outskirts of it. We were curious if there were any crash data at that intersection that may lead to something that could be alleviated. So we reviewed both mass dot data from the most recent senior period available, as well as obtained data from the police station. Both showed about the same, approximately five incidents over a three-plus-year period. They were all low severity, meaning no fatalities or no injuries at all. So there wasn't actually any kind of incidents there that linked itself to extreme mitigation, although we acknowledge that hairpins on there is somewhat difficult to maneuver. And people currently make essentially a two-phase approach. They're coming up Hudson, they stop at Hudson to see if people are coming up First Parish, and then almost stop again at First Parish stop lot to see if people are coming on Bieber Dam Road. That is, we want to identify an existing condition. We have recommended that the town may want to continue to further study that intersection. However, it may need to be done in combination with the two other intersections shown here to the east. Possibility for ongoing circulation around that triangular area would likely make sense. The next element we did was confirm for the town that the trip generation and the parking generation were only related to the site. Those are generally projected based on ITE's trip generation and parking generation manuals. Unfortunately, they're not yet established uses for senior centers. So we generally look to the most common use. So for this one, we looked at a rec center, which, as we know, generally has hours of operation non those anticipated for the senior center. The senior center hours will be generally from 9 to 4, so that is after the morning peak, considering travel time of 7 to 9, and it would end or start to close before the peak afternoon, which is 4 to 6. However, we looked at the rec center, as I said, as a similar use. We tried to see if we protected this size facility, what types of trips would be generated, and is more analysis necessary? So for 15,650 square foot building, rec center, that would generate up to 450 per trips a day. So the state has guidelines that a full analysis of, it's called level of service. It's essentially how much delay is a person going to sit in and how much queue is it going to generate on the adjacent roadway networks. A level of service analysis is usually recommended at all proposed driveways. If a site is expected to generate up to 3,000 trips per day, or a combination of at least 1,000 trips per day, and construct 150 or more new parking spaces. So we don't think we've talked much about the parking on the site, and we'll get into that a little bit more. But the overall layout is going to maintain the existing number of spaces and add approximately 70. So on both the trip generation and the parking generation, we're less than half of what will be required to look at those driveways from a full level of surface perspective. So you have a very low amount of trips being generated, and as I mentioned, they won't overlap your primary peak, your hours of 7 to 9 and 4 to 6. So the next element we tried to look at was, how does the proposed design for circulation, that's where we think people really should be coming from and to, and what kind of comfort will people have using those different access points? So we did have a few recommendations, as I mentioned. Some of them have already been incorporated into the design. So if you look here, as I mentioned, the exit from the driveway that's currently in the historic buildings out into that intersection has been removed. A parking lot is being added near the rec center, essentially to accommodate the loss of that loop near the park center. We did observe that there is some drop-off and pickup activity happening there today with queues up to 14 vehicles. So the rec center parking lot being constructed there provides almost double that amount of space. And then they will still have the same facilities they had in the rear of the building. And then the senior center will be constructed on the west side with parking generated for its use, 70 spaces there from the theme. There is some effort to try to right-size this parking lot to make sure that we're not building a heat island or doing too much pavement. The program has been assessed for the current and future senior center to look at what are the peak times where we anticipate overlap of multiple programs, and how much may that generate? So that's why you can see some areas shaded in light green in the lower left are for those peak time uses. So our typical day-to-day use, we expect to be around 70 max. And that is on point with both the mass elderly, the Massachusetts elderly, fairs, permits, parking for various uses. Senior centers in areas with some transit adjacent to it, potential for vans for potential programs, and some walkability, allow for one space with 150 to 200 square feet. And that's in line with some covered senior centers in that area. Parkers work on the Thelma Senior Center, the Long Beach Senior Center. They also work on a couple in the Leinwand. More rural areas are proposing some more onsite parking, but locations similar to this with some public transit, and as I said, a program with those vans for some activities, are right around that 150 to 200 square feet per parking space. So we use that in our recommendation for what should be included. And we continue to get more about other ways that were also used to the town's bylaws to come up with essentially the same effort. So as I mentioned, the recommendations, remove the driveway. We have the driveway out to First Parish, but there are some people that may need to get farther to the south, farther to the east, if you wanted to make sure that all of the senior center is located in that one quadrant of the site. People have the ability to come to and from it from any direction. On the map I was showing previously, you can see that if you have to go down Hudson and come up countryway to access from just one driveway, it's almost a mile that you would have to go all the way. So we wanted to make sure that people could come to and from in any direction. So there's proposed two-way circulation, entering off of First Parish, circulating around the back of the building. There is recommendation for just a one-way loop on the primary behind. And part of that was because that is the pickup and drop-up route currently used for the rec program. So it just continues to reflect what they have going on there. We did impose just a two-way for the historical society to be able to access all of their parking instead of having to drive around the majority of the site. As I mentioned previously, although the posted, I'm sorry, unposted speed limit on First Parish in front of the site is 30 miles per hour, there's some ambiguity in there since there is no posted sign. So we recommend that traffic, as we mentioned, be installed along First Parish to slightly reduce the speeds. Install that posted speed limit sign. We can use driver feedback signs to alert of its installation. It's very common when the new sign goes in there, so people understand that that is posted. They see the response of how much they maneuver. In traveling westbound, since the speeds are reducing from 35 to 30, there could be a reduced speed limit effect. And then finally, there are a lot of historic walls along the perimeter of the site, as well as trees. So from some of the existing driveways, as well as from the proposed, pulling up to a standard stop location about 4 feet beyond the edge of the road may put you right in line with a wall or a tree. So we may actually want to set those a couple of extra feet back to make sure that where a person's line of sight is going to fall is not going to be inhibited. So those are the recommendations we've had for the site. I'm pretty sure almost all of them have been included. The only one you don't really see on this plan is the couple of signs that are proposed along First Parish and Bieber Dam. With that, I'll hand it off to Joel.
Thank you. The parking has shown 70 spaces on this side dedicated to the senior center. There are 11 spaces on the road, Amy mentioned, is coming out to Hudson. So these are overflow spaces, with an overflow future pay, 16 spaces at that corner. And then, would have been requested by the chief of police to put a new parking lot here to mitigate folks that are parking along the side of Hudson. So we put 23 spaces, which replaces pretty much what you could park along the dirt here. And those are used not only for weekend ball games, but overflow for the rec center and overflow for the senior center. And historical society has 22 spaces on the back. So to just validate some of the numbers that Amy mentioned, the zoning bylaws ask you to come up with some factors if the parking use is not listed in the zoning manual and there is no use for senior center or exactly that kind of use. So we scheduled out the days based on other projects we worked on and with Linda and her team, to sort of come up with the peak use that one would have at 10 o'clock in the morning. Then the project, the usage dips down at noon time, and then there's the afternoon programs that will be built up. And you can see the occupancy is 173, 118, 163. For our purposes, we like to divide those by two to come up with a parking count. So this is well within the 70 plus 11 plus 16 spaces that we have available. In reality, you'll have folks coming by car, there will be some coming by van, there will be some coming by the sloop, a few numbers. There may be some that bike, there may be some that ride. So not everybody, some that walk, not everybody is driving to the center. The zoning bylaws suggest that you would divide these numbers by three, which are being more conservative. The worst-case scenario is, let's say you have a golf tournament, and they want to have a dinner after the seniors raise money at the golf tournament, they come back to the senior center for lunch. I mean, you could fill that room, multi-purpose room, with about 150 people. And assuming there's some other programs, the most that we can sort of envision of the building at one time is 197. So that's a little bit more than the immediate parking spaces, but those would be coordinated site lines. So you wouldn't schedule that kind of a meeting at the same time that there might be a summer camp event going on at recreation department. So those are scheduling things that can happen to the project. The other methodology is, the zoning bylaws suggest you take the state building code occupancy for each room, and you add up that by the building. So that assumes that every building's used 100%, every room is 100% full, and they're all 100% full at the same time. I'm sorry. That gives you 182 total users in the building. The bylaws say you divide that by three, that gives you 61 supposed parking spaces. We obviously think that's a little bit on the low side, so we pumped up the parking count. Now, we don't want to overstate the parking because Tariya spoke about stormwater management. We don't want to increase impervious surfaces more than we need to. We don't want to create a larger heat island effect in front of the senior center. The more paving you have, the more non-reflective surfaces you have, paving gets very hot. That's a heat island effect area. So the town being sustainable and green doesn't want to build more parking than is needed. They don't want to create more impervious spaces than are needed. So we feel this is a good rationale for the number of spaces that are provided. We also then did a similar analysis for the recreation center. The recreation center uses a pretty big area of the building, but they're really only using two or three classrooms out of that A wing. They're using the gym. And so we plotted out, and you can hand this out. Typical day, morning, when there's spin class, some recreation folks on site, maybe a classroom in use, 50 folks on site. Typical day after school, 59 folks on site. And again, when morning sessions for the rec department was spinning are earlier than the senior center opens, or maybe at the beginning of when the senior center opens, you see about 50, 59 folks in the building. Weekend use, when the senior center is closed, and you might be using the fields. Weekend use, when the senior center is closed and you might be using the fields, we project about ninety people on the site, two baseball fields across the street, soccer field. You can't use the soccer field at the same time as the baseball field because they overlap. So we get a total number of parking spaces of ninety, well within the available spaces on the site. And then summer camp use is the most complicated one we're envisioning. If you have one hundred and fifty potential summer campers, but they don't drive, right? They get dropped off. So they'll get dropped off in the morning, picked up at two. So you have two peak times in the day when you'll have drop-off. You'll have the forty staff that are there for the program and you may have a spinning class also going on. So there are two small periods of time when you could have one hundred seventeen, but again, those campers are dropped off before the senior center gets into full activity and they're picked up at two in the afternoon for the after the peak time of use. And again, that's a summer program. And what I want to emphasize is those are not people parking on site, they're coming to pick up their kids. It's really a trip generation, not necessarily parking. And that twenty-three spot parking lot that we've added is one drop-off area and then this area here is another drop-off pickup area that's replacing the drop-off in front of the school.
So I was just going to quick, my name is Rachel again, just introduce myself again. I know I've seen, I've seen very many familiar faces in the audience. I was just going to briefly review the design moving on from the civil and parking that was just presented. So this is a view looking eastward along First Parish of the new proposed, what we're calling a campus, which basically is a large green space where you currently have the asphalt driveway now becoming an area for informal recreation and has been framed or enclosed by the existing gate school, which is to the left, and then our proposed senior center, which is to the right. And in terms of designing the senior center, we were looking at having a building that basically had two faces, a face that faced onto the green and a face that faced onto the adjoining residential spaces. So the building that faces onto the green takes on the character of the existing historic buildings that are in this vicinity. So it has the brick facade that you have at the gate school, it has the white pediment that you have at the gate school, it has the larger double hung windows that again you see at the gate school, all meant to tie into that existing historic infrastructure. Whereas on the rear, you have smaller white platform buildings that are intended to look more like a residential home. So this is a closer view of one of the areas on the green. When you're looking at designing a campus, I launched this at the Design Review Committee presentation, but campuses tend to have one big open space and then smaller, more informal spaces occur at the periphery or at the corners. And so in designing the senior center, we were also looking at creating some of those smaller, more intimate spaces. So here is one space right off of the main lobby where we have an informal area for patio tables and places to counter hate. So then this is, I'm just going to touch briefly on the connection or the relationship to the abutter properties. So this is the current view we have right now where you have the ceiling on the left side and the abutters immediately to the west that are on the right. And this is the proposed design. So again, to reiterate the point I was making earlier about the two sides of the building, the brick side faces onto the green to relate to the gate school and the white smaller platform masting faces onto the abutters to tie in a formal relationship with them. This is the view looking again at the abutters, the existing condition where we have the And then this is our proposed, the proposed view again with the smaller white platform masses on the left, on the right forgive me, and the abutters property on the right. So one concern that was raised at the Design Review Committee was the height of our building. So our building is thirty-five feet as measured to the midpoint of the sloped roof, which is consistent with the bylaws for Situate. However, we understand that that is taller than the ceiling that was there previously, though it is shorter than the gate school that is there now. So we looked at lowering the height of the, leaving the height of the brick building as is and lowering the height of the white smaller masses. And so this is when you lower that one foot. And this is when you take off the gable roof to lower it by approximately twelve feet. It's not possible to lower it anymore without severely impacting the infrastructure of the building. This is a commercial building, it needs tall floor heights in order to accommodate the commercial infrastructure inside like large duck work. But, so one attempt would be to just say we wouldn't put the gable roof on at all. One other comment coming from the abutters was concerning shadows being cast by getting a taller building than they're used to. So we looked at the shadows that are cast on site. The most extreme condition would be in the very early mornings in winter when you have very low light cast across from the east. And what we discovered is that in fact, the gate school already casts a shadow on the abutters property very early in the morning. So at eight AM, this is the condition, this could be the existing condition with or without the proposed senior center. But then already by nine AM, so just an hour later, you can see that there's no shadow being cast. So we feel comfortable in saying that there won't be any additional impact from shade on the abutters properties. So that concludes our presentation and I basically wanted to open up the questions to the board.
Before I do that, Recreation is here and they're in that building and I would love to ask, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Well, feeling so occupied right now other than Mark Ramsey, sixty-one, ten through, and I also am Recreation Director, resident. There is a parking issue over there and that's the reason why, I have a pretty good coaching voice. It was, it was an issue with the parking this summer. This is our first summer there, so it was our first experience. That's the reason why we went to the drop-off pickup. We had a drop-off pickup in the front and a drop-off in the back. We also, we had two in the back. We also had tennis going on in the back and it was pretty much about huff there. My, I'm very conscious of safety, so my staff went out there and detected all the children that were running around, not looking where they're going. And saved quite a few lives by holding them back. And I was lying those, those areas of drop-off and pickup, which I do anyway. We were jaked and we did the same thing, but I had forty staff members on staff there and I did find it very difficult to find parking for them. I was the one starting out to park on the grass. We closed off that, that road at least that goes out to the, 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 uh, First Parish and Hudworth. And you zap the total parking too because that was kind of hazardous and they recognized it. So we closed that off of parking for one of, some of the staff in one of our camps. It's a vast piece of land right there and it does mean a little bit of complaint concerning about the parking. Even if nobody else was there, I had some issues with parking. So at one time I had my lifeguards there and they filled up all of ceiling parking. So it wasn't really a spot to park. Going around that loop is where a lot of the people parked in the wintertime. The Veterans Memorial Gymnas use twenty-four seven. In the, in the wintertime, they, the youth organizations use that as a practice. In the weekends, it's used from eight in the morning till nine, nine, twelve, seven in the sun, there's constantly moving, other towns coming in and playing. And there's parking right there. I don't know if twenty-two parking spaces is going to make it. The one thing that I did notice and we even talked to Rachel about, is if there's parking in the back and maybe we would have access through the back. The other thing that I would be concerned about is maybe a little lighting so when people are going outside, there'll be some lighting for them to step. Do you have anything?
Yeah, and I think one of the main concerns, I think Lombardo, Assistant Director of Recreation, one of the other main concerns, concerns too was when there's like more than one program going on at a time. So we have multiple programs going on at a time at night. When you have that, plus Situate Basketball Association using the gym, plus maybe someone else on the field, I think that's going to accumulate a lot more people there than, than that parking can.
And if you look there on the weekends, you'll see the tennis court is pretty much used all the time. Very popular tennis court. People in town like that, there's lights there until about ten o'clock at night. It's on the weekends and during the week, yes, with the kids at school, it is quiet. We have a couple of programs running during the morning. And then we do our work during the afternoon and then they come back around four or five o'clock and it starts bubbling up again. So if that coordinates with the, with the senior center, that's great. I think it would be great, it would work, but I would hate to get into a parking war with them right away because I have a feeling we'd take all your parking spots and I don't want to do that. I can see that happening if we don't address the parking. So there's the, the parking out back is pretty crumbly. Get back to be redone and rearranged. Also, Rachel and I talked about a ramp coming in through the back door. That would help immensely because if you look at that parking, you could walk almost clearly around the school to get to the front door. We don't use the back entrance, the doors aren't peaceful to use at the moment. We did have a makeover of the doors, but we're working on it. So we've been in, we've been working very hard to make it work. And just to let you know, this is our first home that we've had in Situate and we absolutely love it there. And I am looking forward to sharing it with the C O A. I just think it just needs a little bit of time to look at this and maybe we can all work that parking issue out. Other than that, I think it's, I'm looking forward to, you know, they use the gym as we do. We would use some of their facilities and vice versa, like we already do that. So as a campus, that way it has been, I think if we could look at this and it would decide it right, I'm looking forward to it.
And we also have the town administrator, Jim, do you want to weigh in on this?
Very shortly. I don't think I need a microphone, most people can hear me. Jim Boudreaux, the town administrator, thank you all for coming, thank you to the planning board. I know you have another big hearing after this, another large project, so thank you for your time. This is a good project, the town in particular has wanted to go forward with this and with the senior center after years and years of trying. I think we addressed a lot of the issues out there and taking that driveway out of the intersection will be Hudworth, makes a big difference in that intersection. I think some other things that we talked about, Madam Chair, including making Hudworth a one-way, I think that's a discussion we could have, a little bit more parking along the street and also take the traffic out of that intersection, make that include in that intersection. But all in all, I think what the designers have put before you is a really, really good project that will address the needs of the Situate seniors for a long time to come. So do your business, I ask you to take a good look at it and make your decision as quickly as we can and then we'll get going with this build for the seniors and recreation and hopefully see if it's possible.
Thank you. All right, I'll open up to you, Joel. Ben?
I guess while we're kind of seemingly running on top of the parking a bit, how many spots are dedicated to the existing B wing and the gate school?
How many do you see spots out there?
Yeah, and then how many will be proposed in the park?
So there's a pretty dynamic of a slide that had that information now. I'm going to have to go back. So currently, including the circle and including the parking lot in the upper northwest corner, the site has ninety spaces. That includes the thirty-one that are in the back now, the twenty-two that go on to the Historical Society and the ones that are in the front that I just mentioned. We're proposing having a total of one hundred and sixty-two, including this entity there at the senior center. That does not include the sixteen whole reported we're proposing as well. So your question about how many currently now are dedicated to the B wing?
I guess more in the future because in that, the table of proposed uses where you like out of the parking spots, I didn't see anything that included potential use of the existing school. Obviously that's a building that for now is going to remain on site and potentially could be used. A lot of discussions about how that might be used, but that is, that is a major concern of mine. So I was just curious, being that it's, it's there, it has potential for use, is there spaces allocated for that building?
We have, as Rachel mentioned, a number of cases on the site. I mean, if the B wing was renovated, it would have to be applied to building, and with building permanent, it would have to apply zoning, so they would have to come up with their unpleasant calculations and their analysis. Right now, we don't know how that B wing might be used, so there's no way to figure out, is it a housing project, is it an office building? What uses it is has a very different use or use to it. And so that's deferred for when that part of the project gets renovated and that's part of the building process.
Sure. And I fully understand from your perspective that that answer is adequate, I guess, to us as the town conceptually to think of, you know, a lot of things.
There aren't any spaces moving to B wing at this point, right?
Only B wings empty, so there's no spaces now.
I know it's empty now, but if you're thinking of this as a campus, the question is if you had to add parking to B wing, where would you put it?
It'd have to be extended on the back, then I don't think there's an appetite to take the front of the site to park in. But that would be pretty clearly in the public outreach that folks.
You'd have to take the B wing out.
Or the tennis courts or there'd have to be some other renovation to the back around for the parking.
Phil?
Yeah, I guess.
You want to have a seat up?
It goes back to the word campus. I guess I'd ask those that are vision, that are visioning this as a campus, what, what do they see? What's that use for the, the part of the gate building that's fifty down?
The board has not taken that up. As Joel said, it can run the gamut from a housing use to a business use to a municipal use. I think that's on our agenda, start looking at that. But I don't see that coming to fruition anytime in the near future as to what it's going to be. I think the board's going to have to have a really long conversation and a community conversation as to what people want and maybe what people want to spend on that. But we are envisioning at this point that it will be used, but what that uses, that's not determined. As Joel said, the use determines what you have to have to park.
But the intent is to keep the green space in front of the school now green.
Yeah, yeah, and that complements the Hudworth also, that's probably the reason we're with this. Instead of that green space, we give that its own space up front.
Does that could change, depending on what you do with the gates?
It could, I don't see it changing, but it could. Sure. The town would say they want to park in the front, I don't see that happening, but it is possible.
It's sort of the deep purpose of interest.
Right.
To use the tennis courts and the B wing.
In addition to preserving trees and, and creating more of a green, there is opportunity for outdoor activities or connecting either Recreation and the senior center or extending the senior center sort of into the outdoors. There's a planned outdoor patio that would be available for some community who saw some of that multi-purpose room as well as lounges for the senior center or other places. There's a number of things that we feel we can do with that way to be.
You know, we're going to try to keep our comments because we'll be there. So.
So, not to level everybody else, this is very short-sleeved. If we do not address the B wing right now, we are going to find ourselves reactive as opposed to proactive once again. So I really think that it's a huge tract of land that has a giant building on it. Yeah, right now, we don't know who are here and down or who are, we don't know. I, I feel that this is a cocky for a horse. But that, as you said, or one other concern to be said is I walked from the side of the Recreation Center on that hot Friday, which the senior center would be, I'm in pretty good shape. I almost couldn't make it over here, it was so hot. So that's when you're outside parking, it's going to be like the seniors. And the other issue is the light on the building. I would like to know how far now into the west, are you going to be able to see that? My approximation is that will come into view when you get to our shows or even as far as our locations. And that is a big light box sitting right near the road and that's concerned. Understand?
Yeah, well, I mean, we talked about the parking. I think we need to address the parking issue and I appreciate your comments from the rec department about that. It seems like we need to coordinate, study about that and probably thinking about the future of B here. There's a few other things that I think we can get into. What am I, sort of? One of my sort of immediate reactions to the initial design is that you put the emergency generator right on the street. I don't understand that. It seems like that's something you could put somewhere that's not visible when you pull it. And it seems like there are probably other places to put that. And then, you know, I guess I haven't really seen a straight-on view of this thing, but how much of the senior center itself is sort of blocking out the B wing? It seems like because you moved it as far east as you have, I don't know how well, how symmetrical or how that campus look really looks. From the view you gave us, it was kind of an angle, so I don't know if you really spent some time and effort thinking about how this whole thing ties together.
But my concerns, direct parking outstanding, there's an elevator that is going into the veterans memorial. And with the parking, the way it's set up, it seems to be a little far away from the accessibility to that elevator. And I'm not sure if the elevator needs to be moved or what needs to happen there, but I think that needs to be dealt with. I'm also concerned about connectivity as far as what traffic is concerned. And no one has mentioned Central Park Drive, which enters onto First Parish almost across from Gates. I'm really concerned about the traffic flow. Good time. So you have what?
I can just address the reason the elevators in this location is making the gym accessible.
I understand that.
And the gym is here. There's an entry there, an entry here that are in relative, less than 100 feet from the elevator on the key or entry. If the elevator were put in a different location, it wouldn't make the gym accessible.
I understand. However, my concern is handicapped accessibility. From the rep. center parking lot, that's a walk to the elevator. Out back is another walk. We need to think about that. Okay, that's... All right, we now, yes, our traffic review engineer and our engineer and peer review per site are also here if you want. All right.
Can you hear that?
Okay.
Park years.
All right. Would you identify yourself?
Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. My name is Peter Pelmyer from Merrill Engineers and Lancerers. We're the peer review engineer for the planning board. When we review this plan, two actually iterations of the plan in issue of our latest report a couple of weeks ago. I think generally speaking, it's a good civil design. We did have a recommendation to provide additional soil testing. The depth of groundwater and the infiltration rate. The testing that was done was not done in the location of the proposed systems. And it should be from just a common sense point of view, and it's also required by the stormwater management policy. So I would, and I think the architects agreed to do that. They'd like to make it a condition of approval or part of the final construction documents. And obviously, that would have to be an issue that the planning board will have to decide. The other thing was, I think more information needs to be provided as far as the erosion control during construction, location segmentation basis, start power areas and so on. Again, they had agreed to provide that information. But I do think that's a decision the board has to make on whether they're willing to wait until the project is approved or moves forward for that information to come. And the only other comment I had as far as the stormwater was that they're proposing to tie directly into the closed drainage system on Cudworth and the fronted road. And I think obviously the D P W has to redo that and authorize that connection. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And?
Here's the Madam Chair, members of the board. On the record, my name is Jeffrey Darrell, my partner with the N S Associates. We're the town's traffic review consultant. So yeah, opportunity to review the initial submission for the project letter. In general, if you look at our review, it's pretty consistent with what the comments that the board has. This is a very good project. From a margin of point, looking at internal circulation, the way the site is laid out, it's laid out very rough. So if you look at comments relative to what's going on within the site, there are very few comments. We think the site is constructed very rough. However, in looking at the off-site impacts relative to primarily looking at safety, I think that's probably the primary thing. So there's a couple of things. In our letter, we laid out very detailed to help the applicant to learn the area of the information that we need in order to give some recommendations to you as to the safety of the project, but primarily lines of sight of the driveways in the relatively narrow project. So until we have that information, which has not been provided, we're not gonna be able to render a opinion to it. So I would just urge the applicant to review our comments. They are detailed specifically with respect to what we need to be able to provide sufficient information to you. And I think some of that may have come out in some initial discussions, but basically we need more data. There are statistical analyses that we do formally based on those statistical analyses and we recognize the site on roadways. We like to have valid measurements in order to assess whether cycling is appropriate. And so we told them, here's exactly what we need. I'm very careful in my comment letters, I very insist we need written responses to each of these comments. The applicant may disagree with them, that's fine. What we haven't been provided with is a point-by-point response. And we're happy to answer any questions the applicant has on our comments. Until we have that information, we won't be able to complete our review at all. Holistically, I think what we're hearing was consistent with our review is this is a campus. We cannot take senior center and separate it away from anything else that's going on. That is very valid from the standpoint of not only parking. So we think a parking needs to have no work done on it because it needs to consider all the uses within the campus. You've heard about the peak hours and when all of that's gonna happen. So we need to see kind of a composite of what that looks like, and we don't have that. We do need to plan for the future. You're a planning board, you're planning for the future as well. Doesn't mean applicants have built all this parking or does it need to be demonstrated, where is the planning? And I think that's what you're getting at as well. Because your parking managers are playing, where would you potentially deal with additional parking? That should all be planned out now so that you're doing this once and then it conforms with the place or something else. You say, okay, go ahead and build that or implement that thing. The same thing goes with the off-site traffic impacts. You can't give the senior center any of itself and just the volume of traffic that goes along with that. We have other uses in the campus. There are, as I said, there's a number of good things that are going on with respect to access and circulation. But what it's also doing is moving traffic around. It's having to interact with roadways differently than it does today. So maybe the senior center doesn't generally love traffic, but we need to understand all of these uses, the amount of traffic that's generated, how it's gonna use these intersections, and then what is the impact of that? What you heard in terms of the criteria relative to the need to conduct the traffic, I mean, that is not criteria for the need to conduct the traffic. What is criteria is if you're filing through the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act, so the NEPA filing. What was cited is these are the criteria that a project would rise to, to need to make a formal filing in the state. We're not pretending that the project has to go through NEPA in any way. The traffic analysis is necessary when you have changes in circulation, when you have increase in traffic at a site arguably doesn't need to have a full traffic impact analysis. But what we suggested is a limited analysis needs to be performed. Because as you look at carefully what the applicant submitted, their traffic analysis that has been done points out a number of deficiencies. Those deficiencies can be addressed, but we haven't kind of gotten to the point where the data is kind of proved that out and then we can work with the applicant to develop appropriate solutions. So it's a long way of getting to any more information that hasn't been provided. We have provided guidance to the applicant, which is to suggest to them, if you respond to our comments point-by-point, that it's kind of a synergy down the path of what a new set is looking for, so we can make some recommendations too.
That is, just a clarifying question. You say you need more data. Is it more traffic measurement data over a longer period of time?
Yes, exactly. There are, in order for the data to be statistically valid, there are minimum criteria that need to be met. The data that's been provided in Cudworth Road is solid. You're not gonna get enough data points there. But you need to have, for a speed measure to be valid, you need to have minimum 100 speed limits. Typically, what you do is you get two days worth of speed data out there, you're speedable, and that gives you statistically valid sample. We don't have that at this point.
But before I open it up to the public, please understand, we want this to be the best project that it can be. And we want it to be safe. We want the parking, we want the connectivity, and we want the traffic to be as it should be. We are planning for it, we are future, not in any way, shape or form trying to put the... Comes down to this. Not at all. Okay, this has been ongoing since almost 20 years, 30, whatever. And so here we are, keep in mind, it's 8 million for the senior center, 4 million for recreation for the elevator and repairs. That's how it broke out. 8. something for the senior center and 4 for the elevator and roof and way down here. Now, for the veterans junior. So I will open it up to the public. I don't know if this is spokesperson or what. Just identify yourselves.
I just want to ask sort of a claricon question because I want to know who at the end of the day is responsible for this project?
Who's in charge of this project?
And who's making commitments in on future, like maintenance, monitoring, all those other things that have to happen?
Is that the council on? The senior center or is it the building itself project, any product?
Ultimately, it's me, Steve.
So it's really the town ultimately, that's what I wanted to do.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark Matthews. I am the co-chair of the parish committee for the First Parish Church across the street from the proposed senior center. We think of senior center as definitely needed. Been a long time. Our main concerns are, since we are talking about this as a campus, we haven't heard anybody say anything about Central Park. And we assume that there are going to be lots of people pro-Central Park wanting to take advantage of the facilities at the senior center. And we're worried about how they are going to get to the senior center.
That was my comment about connectivity, okay? It is first and foremost in my mind. Because we do have the senior center, the senior housing, and we have another 30 units that will be going behind current Central Park. So these are things that need to be considered and will be considered. Because again, you don't want people schlepping across your property. We need to figure out a way to get people safely from senior housing to the rep. center and to the senior center. Okay?
Jean Shalhman. So also very much in favor of the senior center, but it does, it breaks my heart to see a brand-new huge building going, being kind of crammed into this space when there's a vacant building there. I know that rehab is difficult, but I wish we were rehabbing the building and then we have enough space for parking and traffic flow. So it disturbs me to see the space being used up from building when there's another building falling down. It disturbs me to see the track disappear. I'm wondering if the field is even safe and usable as a field with the end of it cut off like that. And as another member of First Parish and on the parish committee also, we're concerned obviously about our property being used for overflow parking, which is fine if there's nobody there. But there are safety concerns. It's private property. It's not public property. There's safety concerns. And obviously, if we're using our own building, we'd like to be able to park there. So I just, there are definitely issues with too much, not quite enough space for this kind of project. And as we've also, as many people have said, it doesn't take into account the rest of the building and what is going to happen and parking and everything for when that gets developed.
Right. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jack Willen, O'Curst Road.
Your address, sir?
Pardon?
Your address?
51 O'Curst Road.
Thank you.
Just a comment. No, I have a question. The comment is that they do not know what to do with, what is it, the B wing, main building, okay? The initial A plan, which included that, too extensive. Nothing was going to get done, okay? So we came up, and the seniors voted for this plan, almost 2,000 others voted for the plan. We had a recount. It's a nice-looking building. A lot of work has been done. I don't know how many burdens you have here. I do not believe that, I mean, it's going to impact the church because we want God on our side. But the, I have to say this because no one else will say it, okay? We're getting older. Time is going by. So I would like some idea of how much time, this is my question, this gentleman, I didn't get his name, and this gentleman. How much delay are you talking about here? Period.
This will be continued until, I believe, can be September 12th. If all of the questions can be answered, then we can go forward. But we have to protect everyone. And that is our job. That's why we're here. Yes, sir?
I'm Jerry Klimick, 91 Haveli Road. Just have a comment with regards to getting bogged down with regards to the gates.
Yep.
Okay, the gates is another issue. The town's working on that. But this should not be stopped because of the gates.
There is no intention for you, sir, to stop it.
Absolutely. The people, the church access, I mean, the senior center is providing sidewalks and everything. How far out do we need to, do we need to expand our responsibilities? You talk about the people that live in a center near there and 30 more units or whatever are gonna be built. Well, why is that becoming our responsibility? It seems to me like that's the town's responsibility to step up to the plate and say, well, okay, we've got to provide a sidewalk for them to access this area. I just, I'm hearing a lot of pushback on this. And I just want to remind everybody that, you know, the voters voted this in. We had a recount. It was upheld. And this is a really, really good plan. And I want to see it come to fruition. I think it's, you know, we're arguing about parking. Certainly, I think we can add a few more parking spots. We did hear a report about the traffic flow and everything, and now somebody gets up and says, well, you gotta answer me point by point. And I'm like, what are you talking about, point by point? You know, what do you, how much more do you want from us? And what are you, why are you asking, you know, that? I want some support for this center. I think the voters have already spoken. I think it's our job to respect what they said and to move forward with it. Thank you.
Janot Mayla Road, on July 17th, the town received a letter from the N S Associates regarding the traffic analysis provided by the applicant's engineer. That letter strongly recommended a full traffic study, including level of service findings and turning counts. Has that study been undertaken? And if not, why not?
Because it's beyond the scope of this particular project. So we had spoken with the Traffic Rules and regulations committee. The, we had them, the peer review and the responses that we gave were deemed adequate for this project. And they do recommend, I believe, in a memo to the planning board, that a full traffic study be done, but that's outside of the scope of this particular project.
The planning board's peer review engineer suggests a traffic study as necessary. It does not, the planning board, and I address this to you, Madam Chairman, does not, the planning board rely on its peer review engineer rather than the Traffic Rules Committee.
Yes, we do. And we have to. This is to protect the public. I understand that this may or may not be within our purview. But this is an enormous building that is going to serve a number of people who will be coming and going. And we have to ensure, whether people like it or not, that that is a terrifically difficult intersection between Beaver Dam, First Parish, Cudworth, Central Park Drive, as well as Gate. gate itself is going to happen. Maybe there haven't been that many accidents, but we have to ensure public safety along with everything else. That is our job. We are not trying to prevent the senior center from happening, but what we're trying to do is to make it the best project that it can possibly be. And if that means that you all have to respond to the traffic issue, it is, you are creating this, it is within your purview. You need to do this. In the back, Sally Maseh Green. Excuse me, one second.
I just want to comment on that, and I don't know if you can see it now. We did send a response back on the 24th.
Can you hear me? Speak closely.
There was a response that went back on the Vaness Associates letter dated the 24th. It may not have been point by point, but there was a response. I don't know if the gentleman received that one.
Thank you.
So we actually received a response yesterday afternoon.
Aha.
And I would say that, it was not responsive to the council. No, it's just kind of me with that. We had asked for specific information to be provided, that information was not provided. If we have, for one reason or another, felt that the information is not necessary for us to complete the review, then they can explain why they think it's not necessary. What I would say to the board is that the data that's been provided is not sufficient and does not meet standards to allow the need to render an opinion to you as to whether it's safe to enter or exit the property with the driveways at current location. Well, also for society, the data that's provided does not meet the statistical sample size that's required for a professional engineer to perform a site distance analysis of the driveways. If I call the data collection person today, I can get the required speed measurements done out of that location within a matter of a few days. All of this information does not require a lot of time to collect, nor is it costly. And if the town, if the applicant would like some information from me on how much it would cost to do this analysis, it's actually costing more for me to review than to actually complete the analysis and provide the data. And it can all be done in the under of a couple of weeks. There's nothing complicated that's going to happen.
Thank you. Yes, in the back.
Sally Maseh, 300 Beaver Dam Road. Probably, I'm one of the most, well, I know that intersection better than anybody because I live right at it. I truly believe in the senior center, and I respect your comments in that we need to look at the big picture with traffic. That intersection has been unsafe for over 20 years. And it doesn't matter if there's going to be a few more here, a few more dropping off there. The big picture is that the community, the town situation, has to work together to make that a much safer intersection. It can be done, there's lots of ways. One way is making Cudworth a one-way, going maybe away from that intersection. So for Central Park, maybe bring that away, disperse traffic a little bit. But we have to look at the big picture to make it right.
And we have to make it right, and we will make it right. Mr. Price?
I'm Gordon Price, 451 Mayla Road. Couple of comments. I think you all, I feel, see that the non-lookout, they've been asked to jump through many hoops and then jump to all, I see all of them. Are there some needs or some limitations? Yeah. But the building's been moved, it didn't have less impact on the butters. The building height, having some of that residential side, looks like it's being scaled down a bit. They'd answered the question about shadow. When you consider this site was used as a school, I would imagine there were probably some 300-plus car trips into that property on a daily basis. We're not talking anywhere near that button. Well, I understand the need for safety and for traffic, for traffic flow, but I think we need to also have some degree of reality into what this property is going to generate into the traffic. I don't know what's going to happen to the gates. It might be even a year from now, the B-Wing is not there. I think it's unfair, whole project hostage, to try to come up with an answer right now about what's going to happen to the gates.
I don't think that that was indicated by anyone on this.
So I'm not, I'm not saying anyone is a senior. I don't think, I just don't think that that should be a consideration. And we can move forward without knowing what's going to happen to the gates.
It was mentioned.
Yeah, it was.
That's the only reason I brought it up, just because someone from the board mentioned it directly. They directly mentioned that, you know, we don't know what we're doing with the gates still yet. But why? Why are you talking about that? That's off the table. That's the table.
We are responsible.
Yes.
We are responsible.
I hear you. I hear you a lot of times.
And we will, I understand, I talked with the town administrator, I have listened to lots of different people, I know what may or may not happen with that. Will this hold up the building of the senior center? No. Don't think that it will. It won't. But we have to ensure, sir.
Yes, I hear you. And the safety issue, the safety, if you take a look at this diagram, they're getting rid of that road that now wraps around, which is a huge safety issue. It's massive. Because when you try to come out of there, you run into these three different intersecting roads, well, the plan actually takes that out. And to me, that's excellent. Kudos. Because that's making it a safer ingress and egress.
Yes, I have a question. All right.
A butter.
Susannah Green, 337 First Parish Road. We're probably one of the two most impacted butters for this project. Our biggest concern is the driveway because all the studies so far for traffic and safety have been focused primarily on the intersections. But we already have a hard time getting out of our driveway and adding basically a roadway next to our existing driveways at basically a free driveway intersection. We would like to know if anything's going to be done to ensure our safety with this being out.
I've watched that area, and it occurred to me, and I don't know how you all feel about this, I think that driveway that is going into the senior center, as you face it, needs to be moved further to the crest of the hill.[1058.62][1058.62](applause) In fact, there's a hole right there. And if somehow, some way, that traffic was to come out at the crest of the hill, that would ensure that there was adequate site distance up and down this street. So I don't know if that plays into it, but I think it needs to be moved. We concur, further looking at that plan to the right.
What, what, what did this respond to that? We, when we met with the prior department, we actually had earlier on some of the advocates coming in at the original crest of the building, they do not have the turning radius for prior apparatus. Have we, have we, both of them? With the rest of the building worth.
Okay. All right. Other comments? We have another seven minutes, and you have to. Okay, move it forward. Somebody that hasn't spoken. Sir?
Hi, Jack Wilson, 51 O'Curst Road. I appreciate all your hard work too, ma'am, and your concern. I just want to make a specific, more specific. I'd like to know who this gentleman is. I want to know who, I want to know who you need to hear from by September 12th, that's all. Because you've had two gentlemen spoke. Do they both have to be involved in the decision here? That's all. Just in a friendly way, I'd like to know who's.
It's Vaness that's doing on traffic?
Yep.
So I'm a licensed professional civil engineer in Kamala, Massachusetts. I'm a part of the Vaness Associates. So as a licensed professional engineer, if the town hires me to review this project and specifically talking about safety, I will not, I will not sign off on the safety of that access until I have the required information to be able to say that it's safe. The last thing I want is you to build a beautiful project here and then someone to pull out of that driveway and not be able to see and get hit by a car.
Is it safe?
So all we're trying to do is make sure that the information that's provided is sufficient for us to be able to say, this is the proper location, or here's the improvements that need to be done to make sure that the driveway's in the right place. Once that's been provided, then I'll put my name and stamp it in the letter that says that I certify that it meets the requirements to operate the senior.
All right, I'm working with you.
Get into a big, huge argument.
No, no, no argument, ma'am. I just want to know, what he just said was, if the town hires me. So.
We've already hired.
Yes, I.
I thought you just said if the town.
Do you want a driveway that is not safe, where someone could get injured on the driveway?
Yeah.
That's all we're saying, or.
Excuse me, sir.
That's all, I'm just.
Thank you. All right. Yes, John?
I'm Tony DiNati, on the ancient construction highway as well as board selection. I just want to say a couple of quick things, and a lot of the points have already been made, but clearly the project has been vetted. The board selection all wanted to be a safe project. So we appreciate the work that we want, but we don't want to delay the project though, as a couple of people have mentioned. You know, it's easy to say that there was a street there before, and there was, and much more traffic before than there's going to be now. It's a little bit further down the road, it makes sense to look at it, but it was never deemed dangerous when it was a middle school there. So that has to be looked at. The other building will be taken care of, you know, we're kind of waiting for it to get through this process, and then we're going to get all hands on deck to figure out what the next step is with that building. It could be anything. It could be commercial, it could be senior housing, it could be knocked down, but something's going to happen with that building. That has now been forgotten by the board. We talked about it at our meeting on Tuesday night, and something good's going to happen there. And if it happens to be real good, then we'll probably get rid of most of that field, build the field somewhere else, and put parking back there. So parking is not going to be a concern for future uses of the property. You know, the safety is a concern. I agree with someone that mentioned you can't, you know, you have to think about it. That's planning board to figure out how people are going to get there from different points. But they can figure that out. A sidewalk can be built, a light can be put up. That should not delay the project at all. And I don't think Dan is saying it will. So, you know, we put a lot of time and energy to it. The town said they want the project. We don't want to delay too much more, and there are a little few things that we have to get through, but I don't think they're huge hurdles. We all want it safe, everybody in the room does, and if we all just kind of work together, I think we can get there pretty quick.
I agree.
And, you know, I just would ask everybody to be on the same page. You know, I know the butters don't love it, and if there's any adjustments to be made for them, that'd be great, but I think most of them made. And, you know, there are three houses there that are closed, and the church across the street, which I don't think will be of major impact, but I see your concerns. It's relatively a minor impacting project on neighborhoods as far as big projects go. And I dream, I say that, you know, not living in one of those houses right here, so let's just work together and move forward and know that.
And that's what we're trying to do. All right, I want to thank you all for coming. We will see you again on 12.
You can sign me.
Thanks. We're not even going to deal with that, okay? We can't. We refer from different people. We need to deal with, you are responsible for the traffic. All right? And.
And we also have to think about how we're, how we're developing that, so the planning board finds that to be, it's never something that's adequate for the use. We need that, we need findings of fact in order to make decisions.
I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand that. So many implications, does that mean you need to know what's going on in the building at this single hour?
No, we need to, we need to go by the zoning bylaw so we can justify the wrong spaces. I was told that we would be getting a memo to say if one space per three occupants, the occupants plus there's other spaces in the building that are done by square footage. So we need a final memo on that.
Also true, will this, will the senior center be used at any other time besides 8 to 4?
You know, that actually has been suggested in 9 to 4, recommended as an asset and a positive for the community. So it's available, it's going to be a rental building, we've got committee meetings here because clearly there's not enough places to have committee in various meetings of our town. And we thought it would be a nice idea to allow the community to have access during odd hours, maybe rental revenue. That's something that I guess maybe still needs to go before the board selection, but it's something we, we're willing, able, and would appreciate doing to allow others to have that opportunity.
How much would that be?
You know, occasional. I mean, I think that's the best word. Occasional, that depends. Also, I would add, I mean, as a senior center, I support that standard traditional operating hours, but we have people who certainly would like us to do things occasionally in the evening. So a senior center, but I'm activity, whether it's a discussion group or a support group or a pub or dinner, I mean, there will be occasions. Again, that's to meet the needs that we spoke and predicted and don't know.
I'm not questioning the need, I'm just saying, can you estimate what other? What I heard was we're working from 9 to 4, right? Monday through Friday, nothing else, except an occasional use. And I'm saying, can you quantify?
I can.
I mean, I'm asking, I'm asking you, I'm not asking you.
No, I know, I know. From positive aspect.
I'm asking you for comments here.
Wait, wait. I think that's a good community. I could say we could limit it, so you could say once a month we would mention.
You've got the town that's been created, who's responsible, so you could.
He's not here.
That's why we want to know.
I mean, we have a Sunday support for now. That doesn't mean, you know, we could have illegal stuff, so we couldn't have a team, I think. I mean, if.
But I'm not giving less than, that's why I'm asking you.
I've seen it done. Not here. All right. I think you need to think about this, and it's gone. Okay? Jim?
There are ten standards of review delineated in the zoning bylaw, and I assume that you will make a finding on each of those tents and in due course, either at the next meeting or at some continued meeting. Once all your questions are answered, am I correct in that assumption?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so just wanted to add with regards.
Again, your name?
Jerry Klimick, 91 Haveli Road. Just wanted to add with regards to, will it be used other than 9 to 4? Well, yes, it will. One of the functions of the senior centers is to act as an emergency center. So when electricity's out and people leave a shelter, that's why that generator's there, because it's going to provide warmth for people in the winter and coolness for people in the summer. So it, the beauty of the senior center is how collective it is with regards to reaching out to the community and embracing everybody in it.
Thank you, sir. I thank you all for coming. We will set the up for the request, continue the names, by way of the city road, the store on the new center, 32050, public hearing for the proposal use center at 327 First Parish Road until September 12th. September 12th at 7:00 PM. And to continue the time to active wire with the town court until September 30th, September 30th, 2019. Is there a second? All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we're back with the Drew company talking about Rain Bush. Would you like to make a brief presentation? Tell us, has anything changed? What's going on?
John Teedrew, the Drew company, 221. We've been, over the past month, working with various folks with the town to answer any outstanding questions that we had, concerns, changes, conditions, the need, we have been multimedians with groups of town. I believe we answered all the questions and met all the conditions we need on mitigation. At this point, we're at a very good place where there's nothing outstanding that's not covered, actually, the conditions that are being addressed tonight. It's been a great process. I don't know, Bob, if there's anything else you can add?
Now, I just, to do that, for the record, that we appreciate the work, it's good with planning, hardening. We spent, in.
I believe we answered all the questions and met all the conditions, uh, we need on mitigation. Um, I feel at this point we're in a very good place where there's nothing outstanding that's not covered, actually, in the conditions that are being addressed tonight. Um, it's been a, it's been a great process. Um, I don't know, Bob, if there's anything else you can add?
Now, I just, uh, to do that, for the record, that we appreciate the work, uh, to do with, uh, planning department. Um, we spent an afternoon and shared with the firm by looking at draft additions and some comments that we had on it, uh, and were able to work through some language issues that, uh, I think, um, allowed us to have a meeting in the minds as to what we thought was reasonable and what we thought was reasonable. And I think we came up with a mitigation figure or a, um, contribution figure for, uh, traffic mitigation of sixty thousand dollars. Um, that's our proposal to the board. And, um, we're satisfied with the draft language. It's continued in the proposed decision that we've worked very hard on with Joseph. And, um, other than that, I don't feel anything else.
Uh, comments from the board before we move forward?
Thanks. Just Karen, anything?
Do you have any comments, Karen?
Um, there was a number of, um, I think mostly minor changes that I just completed about an hour ago, um, from town council. So, um, in the findings of fact and the conditions. So those are reflected in here. I'm sorry, they're not bolded. They're not highlighted. I just thought it was more important to get them in.
All right, golden.
Um, I don't have anything particular, but just there's a, I don't know, question on the order of things. As we go through, will there be, will there be opportunity to have discussions on these items, correct?
If necessary, please.
I don't have anything else.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. All right, we shall begin. I'm going to make the following findings of fact. One, on January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, the applicant filed an application for village business overlay district re-bond. A special permit under the zoning bylaw, section five-sixty, and a site plan approval under Cituit zoning by law seven-seventy. The application included, but is not limited to, the following. A, O U application narrative. B, signed purchase and sale agreement adapted by and between the M B T A and Drew. C, traffic impact and access study dated July thirty-first, twenty eighteen, revised January sixteenth, twenty nineteen, performed by the applicant consultant, B H B. D, master site plan and building A to F, building elevations and floor plans, Green Bush Development, Cituit Mass, dated January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, by Carr, Lynch, and Sandell, Inc. And E, filing fees and a boarder's list. F, Green Bush Development permitting plans, Cituit Mass, Massachusetts, by Horsey-Wittenberg, Inc., dated three-fourteen-nineteen, with revisions of four-eighteen-nineteen, five-thirty-nineteen, seven-one-nineteen, and seven-twenty-five-nineteen, consisting of twenty-one individual sheets. Two, the property that is the subject of the application, applicants, of the application is an approximate four-point-four-six acre parcel located on Old and New Driveway and is also known as, and numbered, two-forty-seven Driveway, Cituit, Massachusetts. The property is currently in proof with a computer parting lot used by the M B T A in connection with the M B T A's Green Bush Community Rail Station on the Westerly side of Old Driveway. The property is located in commercial and village business overlay district on the town of Cituit, Zonemap, and under the zoning bylaw. Okay, um, one thing I might want you all, if there's something that's red, put a whole line of that. Number three, the project proposed by the applicants consists of seventy-eight residential rental apartments. Building A will have two residential units on the second floor of the building, and seventy-six apartments are located in four-three-story buildings, building B, C, D, and E, with covered park, garage parking on the first floors of the building and approximately ten thousand five hundred square feet of retail and commercial space located in buildings A, B, and F. The four residential buildings use podium stepped retaining wall design to take advantage of the average finished grade of the smoked site. And the lowermost story of these buildings will not have more than sixty percent wall surfaces to close that the story above the natural grade, ensuring that the buildings meet the height regulation set forth in the Cituit zoning bylaw. Four, the seventy-eight residential proposed units are a mixture of twenty-nine one-bedroom and forty-nine four, or two-bedroom units. Each of the proposed residential building units and retail and commercial spaces will have dedicated parking spaces that meets the minimum parking thresholds. Approximately eighty percent of the parking apartment to the residential building units in buildings B, C, D, and E is located on the first level of the building for longer buildings in a covered garage area accessed from the ways and lane to be constructed as part of the project. The remainder of the residential parking is dedicated surface parking. Three, as required by the section five-sixty-point-seven of the Cituit zoning bylaws, the applicant proposes fifteen percent of the total proposed housing unit for twelve units at the town of their initial rental will be affordable to low and moderate income households with income at or below eighty percent of area median, median income adjusted for household size for the metropolitan or non-metropolitan area that includes the town of Cituit as determined annually by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Thereafter, the subsequent rents will be controlled through a deed rider or a portable housing description as defined by Mass General Laws, Chapter one-eighty-four, Section thirty-one, recorded at the county registry of deeds and/or land court as applicable, and shall be enforced in perpetuity for as long as a period as legal as possible. Six, as part of the project, the applicant, as a result of its contractual obligations with the M B T A, has proposed to provide, as part of the mixed-use development, the M B T A with a permanent perpetual easement in the property to operate, maintain, repair, and use one-hundred-ninety-six surface parking spaces together with associated easements for, one, vehicular ingress and egress in parking area to a public way; two, pedestrian access in parking area to Green Bush Station; and three, utility and drainage easements to accommodate the M B T A's utility and drainage needs associated with the parking area. Seven, as part of the proposed project, the applicant will reconstruct the old Driveway to provide for additional thirteen spaces of parallel parking within the layout of the street as a significant benefit to the town. Three of the spaces will be restricted to facilitate loading in the morning hours for the proposed retail component of the project. Eight, in advance of and during the permitting process, the applicant engaged Horsey-Wittenberg, Inc. to prepare an inflow and infiltration I N I remediation plan intended to reduce I N I and thereby create significant additional sewer design capacity in the existing municipal sewer system operated by the town. Horsey-Wittenberg's group plan, which was reviewed by the town's consulting engineers, identified remedial measures that, when implemented, will restore significant public sewer design capacity to the municipal system that will enable the town to advance two development projects, including such a project that expand housing choices, diversity of housing stock, and increase affordable housing options. The applicant's plan was utilized by the town to obtain a recent two-point-two million dollar of Mass Works Infrastructure Grant, designed to implement an I N I remediation plan and improve sewer infrastructure. This is a significant public benefit to the town of Cituit. Nine, in consideration of the Mass Works Infrastructure Grant referred, referenced in finding number eight above, the board of selectmen, through their role as sewer commissioners, agreed to accept a privileged fee of two-hundred-twenty-nine thousand dollars for the project to connect to the municipal sewer system. Ten, in the re-bond, the Cituit zoning by law permits, a mixed-use development provided that a special permit is obtained from the planning board in accordance with provisions of section five-sixty. A mixed-use development includes a group of structures containing retail, office, and residential uses, and including one or more mixed-use buildings, and may include buildings containing only only multiple dwellings, as long as there is existing or proposed mixed-use building in the same lot. The applicant's project qualifies as a mixed-use development as building A and B are mixed-use buildings. Eleven, the applicant proposes to construct seventy-eight residential units. Two residential units are located on the second floor of building A. The seventy-six residential rental apartments are located in three-street buildings.
Four-three-story.
Four-three-story buildings. Is this redundant? No, it's not redundant. Um, with covered parking on the first floors and approximately ten thousand five hundred square feet of retail and commercial space located in buildings A, B, and F. Twelve, section five-sixty-point-four, on the Cituit zoning bylaws sets forth certain specific conditions applicable to mixed-use developments the applicant has demonstrated on his plans and in his presentation that the lot or M R requires. Areas required for any rebuilding or use do not include any part of a lot that is required by any other building or use to comply with any requirements in the bylaw. Thirteen, the applicant met with the Design Review Committee, D R C, and planning department staff to review whether the proposed project meets the design review standards of section five-sixty-point-eight. Under Cituit zoning by law seven-fifty, the three-member Design Review Committee is charged with making recommendations to the planning board on building and site design. Following discussions with the D R C and planning staff, the applicant modified its original architectural plan to address recommendations involving the scale, height, proportion, and rhythm of, of salons, the building facades, roof shapes, facade materials, and compatibility of site features such as landscaping and parking with the building and its abundant properties. Based on the changes as shown on the updated architectural renderings, the proposed project meets the design review standards of section five-sixty-point-eight. See also below. Fourteen, Cituit zoning by law, section five-sixty, on four-point-D, requires applicant proposing use, use development to concentrate retail uses in the center of each village so they can better be supported by pedestrian activity. And to accomplish this goal, more than fifty percent of the net floor area of the first floor of the mixed-use building shall be occupied by retail uses. Building A and building B are mixed-use buildings in the proposed mixed-use development and comply with the bylaw standard, since one-hundred percent of the first floor of building A is retail and more than fifty percent of the net floor area of the first floor of building B is proposed to be occupied by retail use or uses. Fifteen, Cituit zoning by law, section five-sixty-point-four-point-E, sets forth certain dimensional requirements for mixed-use buildings, including limiting the number of units committed to up to sixteen units per forty thousand square feet of the equivalent of seventeen to twenty units per forty thousand square feet. These significant public benefits are provided, described, described below. The applicant's proposed project is consistent with the density limitations since it provides significant public benefits. Section five-sixty-point-five further allows bonus density of up to twenty units per forty thousand square feet in the Green Bush area if parking is provided under the mixed-use structure, provided the board makes a written finding that the applicant will provide significant improvements, providing a public benefit which can include off-site infrastructure serving a public pur, purpose, such as sidewalks, and also infrastructure for neighborhood wastewater treatment or other community infrastructure. The applicant has provided significant public benefits via its off-site parking and street improvements on old Driveway committing to a traffic safety audit post-construction by paying for the cost of the past study of the sewer system. Participating as a project in the public grant program and agreeing to contribute assigned and self-funded for traffic and pedestrian improvements in Green Bush. Sixteen, the applicant will devote twenty-six percent of the lot to open space in excess of twenty percent required by section five-sixty-point-four-E. The property has significantly more frontage than the required twenty feet along both old Driveway and new Driveway, which will be utilized to promote safe and convenient access by cars and pedestrians to and within the site. Seventeen, Cituit zoning by law, section five-sixty-point-six, sets forth of the parking requirements for mixed-use buildings and parking in the re-bond. The planning board may weigh these requirements in the Green Bush area due to the proximity of the M B T A parking area. The applicant proposes a total of one-hundred-and-sixty spaces associated with the project as shown on the zoning compliance plan with the latest revision date of August eighth, two, two thousand nineteen. The parking includes one-point-five spaces per two-bedroom unit and one parking space per one-bedroom unit. The proposed parking plan is compliant with the bylaw requirements of section five-sixty-point-six without need of a waiver. As required, number eighteen, excuse me, golden.
The wouldn't get the applicant there? Sure.
Yeah, right. Eighteen.
We'll do the waiver, waiving of the reading, like a town reading.
I know. Um, as required, the Cituit zoning by law, section five-sixty-point-eight, design review standards, the planning board has considered the extent to which the project satisfies the design standards detailed in the law. A, standard, roof pitch to center, dormers and couches not more than twenty feet in width, eight-to-twelve pitch to roof, twenty percent roof may be flat. Finally, as depicted on the architectural plans, the proposed, proposed roof designs of the retail, mixed-use, and multifamily buildings are consistent with the pitch style, dormers, and design variation requirements of the bylaw. And therefore needs the requirements of section five-sixty on A A, building A, B, C, D, and F, all having pitches greater than or equal to eight to twelve, except the dormers which are exempt. Less than twenty percent of roof areas are flat or are designed, other, are designed, other designed than a slope or pitch pool. B, a standard facade, a minimum of fifty percent of round floor building facades and thirty percent of second floor building facades facing public ways shall be glazed. Finally, the applicant has proposed architectural features for the proposed building facing public ways that have been recommended by the Design Review Committee and planning staff that conclude, that include a mixture of glazed surfaces, finished surfaces, stone, brick, and/or surfaces that are designed to be screened by ivy or other natural plant, planting. The planning board finds that the use of this design scheme recommended by the D R C and planning staff is superior to the glazing scheme contemplated by the bylaw and grants a waiver to allow the approved design scheme as shown on the final architectural renderings. C, standard, front yard setbacks, minimum five and maximum fifteen feet on Driveway. Minimum ten feet and maximum twenty-five feet on all other streets. Finally, the applicant's site plans demonstrate that all buildings meet the minimum and maximum front yard requirements as they are located in these dimensions. Building A has a five-foot setback. Building B and C have five-point-one-foot setbacks to the foyer. And building F has a twelve-point-one setback. There is no parking in the front yard setbacks in accordance with the standard. The project accordingly meets the requirements of section five-oh-six-point-eight, C. D, standard, yard, side yard and rear setbacks, eight feet in Green Bush. Finally, the plans indicate that all buildings will have a side and rear yard setback of at least eight feet in accordance with the standard and therefore needs the requirement of section five-sixty-point-eight, D. E, standard, not applicable to the project. F, standard, Green Bush design standards, to encourage new development on large power slopes while visually maintaining the small residential scale characteristic of the area. The following limitations shall apply to mixed-use buildings in Green Bush. One, no building structure shall be longer than one-hundred-and-twenty feet measured along any side of the building which faces the street. And two, front building facades, facades shall be no longer than fifty feet without articulation. Finally, the plans indicate that all buildings facing the street are less than a hundred-and-twenty- Finding, the plans indicate that all buildings facing the street are less than a hundred and twenty feet along. Along the side facing any street and front building facades are not longer than fifty feet without articulation in accordance with the standard and therefore meets the requirements of section five oh six point eight, F.
Can I just hold for one second?
Yes.
These numbers are wrong. It's supposed to be five sixty point eight G one, you know, and so wherever it says five oh six, it's supposed to be five sixty. Sorry, had this much to interpret.
Okay. Five sixty?
We're gonna have to start over.
Way.
There's several of them, but all the five oh sixes should be five sixty.
Five sixty.
She said seven.
Hey, I'm just reading, so I'm sorry. G, standard one, parking and landscaping. Driveways shall be no greater than twenty-four feet in width. Shared access to parking lots by two or more businesses is to be encouraged wherever possible. Finally, the site access driveways to the parking area are shown on the proposed plan and the proposed site access driveways are less than twenty-four feet in width in accordance with the standard and are therefore needs the requirements of section five sixty point eight, G one. Okay. H, standard two, parking and landscaping. A landscape plan shall be required for all submissions except where waived by the planning board. Finally, the applicant submitted a landscape plan prepared by a registered landscape architect in accordance with the standard and therefore meets the requirement of section five sixty point eight point G point two. I, standard three, parking and landscaping. Special standards for the water resource protection district. Finding, not applicable. J, standard four, parking and landscaping. New landscaping shall not include invasive plants as identified on the list brought about the planning department. And to the greatest extent possible, existing invasive plants will be removed. Native plants shall be used in landscaping wherever possible. Finding, the applicant submitted a landscape plan showing appropriate, showing appropriate plantings as prepared by a registered landscape architect in accordance with the standard and therefore meets the requirements of section five sixty point eight point G point four. No invasive plants are proposed and native plants are used where possible. K, standard five, parking and landscaping. Screening, all buildings and parking areas within fifty feet of adjacent residential zone district shall be screened on each side adjoining residential premises except where screening is already provided by an existing fence, wall, hedge, or natural terrain feature. Said screening shall be maintained in good condition, no advertising shall be placed to their own, and shall be designed so as not to obstruct vehicle sight distances at entrances, exits, or street intersections. Screening provisions may be modified or waived by the planning board for good cause. Finding, there are no applicable screening requirements in the commercial and V-Von. However, the applicant has proposed trees and plantings that will screen buildings from above uses. Screening is proposed at the edge of the property to buffer above uses. Nineteen, as required by situated zoning by law section five sixty point nine, special current review procedure, the applicant engaged in the required free application review, review process, and review process. Accordingly, the applicant met the requirements of section five sixty point nine. Yeah, you said twenty. Twenty, situated zoning by law section six two zero point one limits the building height of all structures in the commercial zoning district, exclusive of chimneys, spires, towers, and other projections not used for human occupancy, to three stories or forty feet whichever is lower. The applicant has met the standards as the proposed buildings do not exceed three stories as the first story with the purposes of determining building height shall be the lowermost story with more than sixty percent of the wall surfaces enclosed to that story above the natural grid. See definition of story, section two hundred. The lowermost story of each of the buildings in the proposed project meeting that standard is the first floor above the proposed garage levels and therefore the applicant is proposing buildings that meet the building height requirements of section six two zero point one. Twenty-one, situated zoning by law section seven seven zero point six sets forth the standard review for approval of proposed site plans which are required for proposed mixed-use developments. Twenty-two, section seven seven zero point six point A, site plan approval standard A. Protection of adjoining premises against detrimental or offensive benefits of utilizing the site. Finding, the proposed use replaces an illuminated commercial parking lot with a mixed-use development including retail, commercial, mixed-use buildings, mostly given residential buildings, and a reconstructed commuter parking lot for the MBTA. As depicted in the plans, the site work, drainage infrastructure, sewer connection, site plans, landscape plans, the proposed project represents a significant improvement of the site and benefits of the neighborhood and abundant properties. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, it will improve it, will not create any nuisance or result in any hazards to vehicles or pedestrians as a result of the proposed use or structure. And is designed with adequate inner containment facilities to ensure the proper operation of the proposed project and minimize any impacts to the neighborhood and abundant properties. The abundant uses to the north of a, of a concrete pipe quads, to the east of the town transfer station, to the west the Greenwich station commuter rail, into the south a dog kennel, all have some significant voices associated with them. Accordingly, the proposed project meets the requirements of section seven seven zero point six point A. Twenty-three, section seven seven zero point six point B, site plan approval standard B. Traffic safety and ease of access at street and highway entrances and exits of driveways, taking account of traffic volume, rates, site distances, and distances between such driveway entrances, exit in the nearest existing street or highway intersections in times of deep traffic flow. Finding, the applicant engaged VHB to prepare a traffic impact and access study. The board with engineering period consulting Merrill Lynch and S.O.S. surveys engaged Balacy and Associates Inc. to evaluate the accuracy and accuracy of VHB's methodology, data findings, and conclusions. VAI submitted detailed written comments to the planning board. In response to these comments, the applicant and VHB provided responses, revised reports, and updated site plans. After further review by VAI, the applicant was determined to have adequately addressed VAI's comments and regulations. The board determines that the proposed project as conditioned provides for traffic safety and ease of access at the street and access driveways. Meet your exam, exceed all AAS, HTO standards for site distance. It will not create any congestion in the streets and ways abiding the proposed project, or he needs the sections with irrelevant proximity to the proposed project. Twenty-four, section seven seven zero point six point B, site plan approval standard C. Safety and accuracy of driveway layout, pedestrian safety, off-street parking along the sites, minimizing glare from headlights and light intrusion, sufficiency of access to surface vehicles such as electricity, gas, fuel, telephone, laundry, rubbish removal, water, sewer, fire, police, ambulance, or other routine of emergency vehicles. Finding, the board finds that the proposed project has safety convenient driveway layouts, makes adequate provision for pedestrian safety including access to and from the proposed project across old driftway. Makes adequate provision for off-street parking which meets the requirements of the situated zoning by law. As off-street parking on old driftway, it has appropriate loading areas for the neutral and commercial uses and can restrict additional spaces for additional loading spaces along old driftway. That there is adequate truck and public safety access including for emergency vehicles at all times. Twenty-five, section seven seven zero point six point D, site plan approval standard D. Adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage, revenues, and other waste resulting from the uses prohibited on the site, safety and adequacy of water supply and distribution in a firefighting facilities on the site. Finding, the board finds that there are adequate waste disposal facilities that are accessible abiding each of the proposed buildings and that waste water will be connected with a municipal sewage system to which the applicant is contributing its study and resources. To improve in order to free up necessary capacity through an I and I remediation plan. The board is in receipt of consulting reviews that include the GPW and public safety measures of the town, that there is adequate water supply for drinking water and for firefighting purposes, which capacities are currently being evaluated in a comprehensive water study by the GPW. Sure. Twenty-six, section seven seventy point six B, site plan approval standard E. Adequacy of surface and stormwater drainage and snow melt runoff within and from the site, including but not limited to all walkways, driveways, buildings, parking, and loading areas. Finding, the board finds that the proposed site plans show adequate snow storage areas and as confirmed will not present any significant concerns arising from or relating to snow storage. The applicant engaged Horsey-Witten Group and a civil engineering firm to prepare a stormwater impact assessment and report to demonstrate that proposed project will meet state and local standards for the collection, treatment, and disposal of stormwater. The board engaged Merrill engineers named Merrill to evaluate the adequacy and accuracy of Horsey-Witten Group's report and data as well as the efficacy and adequacy of its sound. Merrill submitted detailed written comments to the planning board. In response to these comments, the applicant and Horsey-Witten Group provided responses, revised reports, were reflected in and updated for site plans. After further review by Merrill, the applicant was determined to have adequately addressed Merrill's comments and recommendations of the stormwater management system is built as defined. The applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan and erosion and sedimentation control plan that ensures that the project will be managed appropriately before, during, and after the completion of construction. The review of the stormwater management system of the planning board's consulting engineer and their approval of the special permit eliminates the requirement for separate stormwater permit under Stormwater General Bylaw and its regulations for any work that conforms to the plans. Richard A. Clayder, P.E., has served out that the drainage system can be expected to result in post-developed runoff characteristics included, including equal total volume of runoff and water quality runoff to be equal or less than pre-developed runoff characteristics. Twenty-seven, section seventy seventy point six point F, site plan approval standard F. Finding, not applicable as the site plan is not in the water protection district. Twenty-eight, section seven seventy point six point G, site plan approval standard G. Minimizing the volume of cut and fill, the number of six-inch caliper or greater, number of trees of six-inch caliber or greater removed, the length of stone walls removed, soil erosion and destruction of other natural features. Finding, the existing site is a large parking area that is void of vegetation except along the very perimeter of the property and is mostly paved and illuminated. The project as designed utilizes the existing topography which is elevated and slopes from east to west to fit the proposed buildings into the site, increase the amount of open space, and add substantially to the open space. Trees and landscaping that is an improvement over the existing conditions. Twenty-nine, section seventy seventy point six point H, site plan approval standard H. Minimize obstruction of scenic views from openly accessible locations. Finding, not applicable. Thirty, section seven seventy point six point one, site plan approval standard I. Parking areas shall be adequately buffered and shaded using native vegetation. Parking lots with ten or more spaces shall be planted with at least one shade tree per ten spaces of a caliber of at least two and a half inches D-H. With each tree providing shade to the parking area. Parking areas and visually degrading elements such as dumpsters and loading trucks shall be designed to minimize visual intrusion from public ways and residentially owned or zoned areas. In addition, suitable screening of such areas by wood fences and dense native evergreen hedges of five feet or more and timely planting shall be utilized. The use of chain link fences shall be avoided except in industrial areas. Outdoor lighting, including lighting on the exterior of a building or lighting in parking areas, shall be arranged to minimize glare and lights below to neighboring properties. No or outdoor light shall be located more than twenty feet above the ground. Finding, the board finds that the parking areas for the proposed project will include covered parking spaces, interior spaces in the center of buildings B, C, D, and E, permanent parking, reconstructed parking for the MBTA, and off-street parking along old driftway. The parking areas are all buffered by abundant properties by fencing or vegetation and shaded where possible by existing of proposed trees, meeting the requirements of the bylaw. Section thirty-one, seven seventy point six point J, site plan approval standard J. Safe, functional, and convenient pedestrian bicycle and wear practical transit access and continuity of the pedestrian and bicycle network within the property and to nearby pedestrian and bicycle facilities and trip generators. Finding, the board finds there is safe, functional, and convenient onsite and offsite pedestrian, bicycle, and transit access to the proposed project that is offsite, that is opposite the Greenwich MBTA commuter rail station, meeting the requirements of the bylaw. The proposed project also ties into a network of public sidewalks that will be reconstructed in part, in part in connection with the project providing the required community continuity required by the bylaw. Based on these findings, the planning board finds that the Village Business O'Leary District Special Permit meets the requirements under the Village Business O'Leary District, section five sixty, as the project will be encarved with the general purposes of the bylaw and the requirements of Mass. General laws, chapter forty A, and it will not have a greater detrimental impact on the neighborhood than a conventional commercial development plan. Is designed with consideration for health and safety and is superior to conventional development plan in preserving open space, minimizing environmental disruption, and allowing for more efficient provision of services. Based on the findings of fact and testimony provided by the.
That's the end of the findings of fact.
Is there a second on the findings of fact?
Second.
Is the discussion on the findings of fact?
I think it's second.
Okay.
Very quick.
All right.
Um, most of, just I pushed up, but on page one, first page, um, item B eight says Drew, probably should say applicant. I don't think you define that terminology. Item number two, it says in the first line, applications, probably should be application. Is that right? More than one application?
No, that's not.
Okay. Um, item, anybody stop me if you get to something else, but, um, item three, it says four residential buildings are using the step-down design. The, building A is actually a residential building in some way as well, right? So, is there any need to differentiate that?
It's two buildings in that building, right?
Right. There's really sort of five residential buildings, but maybe it should say the four residential only buildings. Should we say that?
More about Village B though. Village B's mixed use.
Yes, you could say they're applicable building views, podium, step between walls and.
Is it applicable to all buildings?
Um, building A is, is not an issue at all. It's, it's, it's B through, uh, E.
Why don't we just say the buildings?
B through, B through E.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Just say buildings B through E. Page three at the top of page. I've had this question before, I'm not sure what he says, to advance two development projects. What, what does that mean?
Well, there's another development project that was tied, the Toll Brothers.
Yeah.
That was tied with the infrastructure grant for the Mass. Rock Square.
Okay. I misunderstood what you said there then. So, um, it's, but it's not two additional development projects.
No.
It's this project and one we've already approved. So, it's not any new development projects. To advance, I would say to advance this project and one existing development project. To advance, I would say to advance this project and one existing development project. Just to be clear that we have freed up capacity for two additional development projects down the road. Number nine, just need to close the foren up in that one. After the bottom.
Just say one more.
Just close the foren.
Yeah.
After the bottom. Item fifteen, is this where it says some finding at the end? Is this the sixty thousand you're talking about?
Yes.
Should we put a number in here?
Oh, that's a condition. That's a condition.
Oh, it's in, it's in here, okay. Then item eighteen, item eighteen A, the last line, I think the, just the language needs to be straightened out.
Yeah, that was, I was
Because you cross off the word design, yeah, second time, I think it makes sense.
Yep.
I think so, but I'll double check, this was a town council edit right before I got here.
All right, that's why I hesitated, a design or a design?
Yeah, I, I was trying to get this all done.
Okay, sorry. They will see that when I'm all right.
Yeah, we'll put it down.
Yeah, okay.
And changing five sixty.
Right, changing throughout.
Changing five sixty.
Throughout.
There's a couple places, like on page six, first binding, you have a semi-fold, probably dummy, depth of fifty feet. Same thing with the next one down. And we probably need that semi-fold in here after twenty-four feet of the wall. Are you all set? On page ten, the finding for number thirty, at the very end, I think just either maybe a couple words there, proposed trees and therefore meets the requirements or something like that. Kind of, it does look like.
I'm not finding where you are.
Finding on section for item number thirty, the last sentence.
The parking areas are all buffered from
It says shaded where possible by existing or proposed trees, meeting the requirements of the biolot. I say thereby or therefore meeting the requirements of the biolot, right? That's all I have.
Anyone else? All right, all those who favor the findings of fact, you say ah.
Aye.
Any votes? Let's move on.
This is where you can.
This is where you can. Okay. We only have ninety one of them. That's all, just a few. Here we go. Based on the findings of fact and testimony provided at the public hearings, I move to approve the mixed-use development special permit for the Village Business Overlay District for two forty-seven Driveway with the following conditions. General conditions. One, all construction work shall be done in accordance with one plan submitted by Horstley-Witten Group entitled Green Bush Development Planning Plans, Central Massachusetts, dated three fourteen nineteen, with revisions of four eighteen nineteen, five thirty nineteen, seven one nineteen, and seven twenty-five nineteen, and any additional revisions needed to conform to the conditions contained herein the mixed-use special permit. Two, architectural plans consisting of a master site plan dated one eighteen twenty nineteen, building A, floor plans and elevation as A small A one point one, sections and floor plans A small B dash one point one, elevations A B dash one point two, section and floor plans A C dash one point one, elevations A C dash one point two, building D and E floor plans in sections A D E dash one point one, buildings D and E, elevations A D E dash one point two, building F floor plans and elevations A F dash one point one, with revisions to eight eight nineteen. Three, same compliance plan dated two fourteen nineteen with revisions to eight eight nineteen. Four, old driveway street elevation dated two fourteen nineteen with revisions to eight eight nineteen. B, aerial view, Green Bush Development, Central Mass, Drew Company, dated two fourteen nineteen with revisions to eight nineteen. Six, view, central way A and B, received two fourteen nineteen. Seven, view old driveway A and B received two fourteen nineteen. Eight, view central way received for five nine nineteen, meaning. Six, view old driveway received for five nine nineteen, meaning. Ten, view central way received for five nine nineteen, meaning. Eleven, building B entry dated five nine nineteen, five nine nineteen, eleven. Building C, three-dimensional view dated five nine nineteen, twelve. Building D and E, west elevation dated five nine nineteen with revisions to eight eight nineteen, thirteen. Section elevation, central way received for five nine nineteen, meaning by Carl Menchon Sandell, Cambridge, Mass. Fourteen, total metric plan dated five twenty-eight nineteen by Autumn Library of Green Bush Development. Any additional revisions are needed to conform to the conditions contained herein. Building elevations must be approved by the town planner prior to receipt of a building permit in accordance to the supplemental T A. Two, with this mixed-use permit requires approval permitting or licensing from any state, local, or federal agency. Such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the town of Central Planning Board, the Planning Board or the Board. Approval of this mixed-use special permit, including but not limited to approval of work on the Board of Selectment and Department of Public Works, D P W, and all public rights of way, including old driveway and new driveway. Construction shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations, including but not limited to those of the Central D P W, higher department building department, Board of Health, Planning Board, as well as Massachusetts D E P and State Building Code. All necessary permits and rules must be received prior to construction. Three, construction shall meet all requirements of the Central biolot. All conditions of approval shall be inscribed in the mixed-use special permit. Four, the applicant shall meet the current application applicant and all his, oh, excuse me, the applicant shall meet the current applicant and all his successors and interests. This special permit shall last within two years, which will not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal under General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section seventeen, from the grant thereof if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or the case of a special permit for construction if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. The planning board may extend said period for good cause shown upon receiving a written request from the applicant prior to the expiration of said period, which request shall provide a detailed description of the good cause necessitating an extension. A public hearing may be required. Five, the total number of residential dwelling units on the site shall not exceed seventy-eight. There will be twelve forty units within the seventy-eight units. The housing units shall be twenty-nine, one-bedroom units, four of which units shall be affordable, and forty-nine, two-bedroom units, eight of which units shall be affordable. The total number of bedrooms shall not exceed one hundred twenty-nine. A bedroom shall be defined in accordance with Title Five of the State's Amptory Code. Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, M A A B, requirements must be met. All units will be rented under long-term rental agreements as indicated by the applicant. The applicant shall obtain the endorsement of the planning board for the mixed-use special permit within ninety days of the expiration of the field period and this decision becoming final. The signature block on the plan shall be revised to allow for five signatures. The elevation of bio-retention area seven B, showing an elevation of thirty-three point eight, should be revised to match the hydro cab elevation of thirty-four prior to endorsement. Seven, the property line shall be staked or pinned at all times during construction. Utilities, parking, traffic, and street improvements. Eight, maintenance and repair of driveways, MBTA parking areas, pedestrian access to the MBTA, Community Rail Station, stormwater management, snow removal, lighting, and landscaping shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Nine, no new underground irrigation systems shall be allowed to connect to the town water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water in accordance with the policy made effective by the Board of Selectment on October eighth, twenty fourteen, and reaffirmed by the Central Water Commissioner on May twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with the policy must be supplied by onsite sources of private water suppliers at the expense of the property owner. Ten, the applicant shall consent to allow members and town officials of the planning board and other persons acting under the authority of the planning board as its agents to enter upon any lands and carry out such surveys and inspections as may be deemed necessary, and place and maintain monuments and marks. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their efforts to verify the layout, design, and construction work in the special permit plan as are satisfactory and conform to town specifications and the requirements of the planning board. Eleven, an independent inspector contracted or employed through the town shall perform the required construction inspection according to Section nine point O of the Subdivision Regulations. All required inspections shall take place and be inspected by new inspector, including water and sanitary sewage facilities. The inspector shall be approved by the town planner and D P W and shall work under the direction of the town planner. Weekly reports shall be submitted to the applicant and the planning board stating results of any and all required inspections during construction unless more frequent reports are needed. Noise and air quality monitors during equipment reporting in accordance with D E P regulations shall also be required. Twelve, construction of the proposed roads, proposed drainage system, proposed water system, and proposed sewer system shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer. Said supervising engineer shall certify in writing to the planning board and D P W at completion that the proposed roads, drainage system, water system, sewer system, and constructed, were constructed in accordance with the approval plans, and said systems are functioning in accordance, full accordance with the approved design. Thirteen, the certification of the roadway construction and utilities shall be accompanied by as-built plans, signed and stamped by a professional land surveyor and a supervising registered professional engineer. Prior to issuance of an occupancy permit for any building, a registered professional engineer shall inspect the exterior of each building as necessary and certify to the planning board and building commissioner with a signature and stamp on an as-built plan that the grading and stormwater management systems conform to that shown on the mixed-use development special permit and are functioning in accordance with design requirements, and any variation in grade is immaterial and does not materially alter the performance of the stormwater system. The site development as-built, including building structures, topography, roadway, water, sewer, gas, cable, fiber optic, electrical, and storm drainage infrastructure, will be submitted in AutoCAD format, twenty thirteen Ohio R E S R I interchange format, registered to the Massachusetts State Plane Mainland Coordinates, North America, date of nineteen eighty-three, compatible with the town system along with stamped and signed copies of said plans. Fourteen, all materials for utility construction shall meet D P W construction standards. Fifteen, the street opening permit will be required for each individual utility connection. Sixteen, the applicant shall be responsible for ensuring an inspection of the existing water crawling and treatment systems located underneath the Green Bush Community Rail Line West Parking Lot is conducted at least twenty days prior to commencement of construction by the applicant's registered professional engineer, with the representative of the planning board also present, in accordance to, in order to evaluate the condition and performance of existing water quality treatment system. Acceptable water quality treatment for the proposed project area and off-site system has not been included in the drainage calculation nor calculations nor relied upon for the proposed development to meet applicable stormwater regulations. This inspection report shall be provided to the board at least ten days prior to the construction commencing and scheduling the pre-construction conference and all recommended follow-up work shall be completed prior to the start of construction. Seventeen, additional soil testing is required at the location of the proposed bio-retention area numbers two, three, four, and six, in order to confirm the soil conditions and depth to the estimated seasonal high groundwater elevation, E S H G W, used in stormwater calculations. The soil testing shall be completed within thirty days of construction commencing, thirty commencing. Any required design modifications resulting from such testing shall be submitted to the town planner within thirty days of completion of the testing, all of which is required prior installation of any drainage on-site. Eighteen, the specifications for the engineering, engineered soil mixture for the bio-retention areas shall be submitted prior to the pre-construction, meaning these specifications shall clearly demonstrate that the infiltration capacity of the engineered soil mixture and the infiltration rate used in the stormwater calculations. Nineteen, all replacement of or connection to town sewer, drainage, and the installation of water mains and impertinences shall be provided according to the specifications of the Central D P W with an independent inspector contracted or employed by the town to review the construction activity and ensure compliance with the town rules and regulations. D P W personnel must be in attendance for any sewer, drainage, and water infrastructure and impertinence work in the town right of way. In addition, the following must be addressed to satisfy the town sewer division prior to the commencement of construction. A, an external grease trap with an inner baffle wall shall be required in any non-residential space with roof preparation and shall be noted on the plans. The newly constructed manhole shall be furnished with watertight covers and drains. See, newly constructed manhole structures shall be vacuum tested, which must be witnessed by the sewer division and/or by the town's approved independent inspector. D, newly constructed sewer lines must be pressure tested in accordance with town test standards, and the test must be witnessed by the sewer division and/or the town's approval approved independent inspector. C, a street opening permit for the sewer lines of building F shall be obtained. Police deals, details if required for driving management and safety shall be provided through the Central Police Department, shall be responsible for the contractor. Any proposed disruption, shutdown, required to be existing forces sewer made on the Driveway shall be reviewed, coordinated, and agreed to with the sewer division. Sewer perm F, sewer permits are required and shall be obtained for each building. The privilege fees will be calculated from each building permit application, which fees are based on the number of sewer units in each building. The total amount of the privilege fees for the project shall be two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars in accordance with the terms of an agreement between the applicant and the Board of Selectment to be paid in one month sum prior to any water use from the site. A, external cleanouts and viewports. Given the applicant has confirmed that the proposed sewer infrastructure will be all maintained by the applicant, the sewer division will allow requirements for external cleanouts and viewports to be waived at the applicant's discretion. Should the applicant choose not to install external Should the applicant choose not to install external cleanouts, then an internal cleanout must be included for each building. B, the privately constructed sewer infrastructure will be owned and shall be maintained at all times by the applicant. A, a letter of acceptance from sewer division shall be provided to the DPW, sewer division, and the planning board. J, a flow assessment document certified by a professional engineer detailing the amount of flow from the project and impacts to the town's pollution system and impacted capacity at the nearest pump station and WWTV shall be provided to the DPW and planning board within forty-five days of approval of this permit and your length of sixty days prior to commencement of construction. The final sewer permit shall be provided to the planning board prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference and any construction commencing. Twenty, prior to commencement of work or as soon as practical thereafter, street signs shall be erected as approved street names. Such street names shall be approved by DPW Police Department by the department planning board. Twenty-one, the building, parking, walkways, paths, and required signs shall meet all applicable requirements of the ADA and the AAV and Citroen Commissioners under this building. Twenty-two, the applicant shall provide a copy of the recorded easement agreement prior to endorsement that demonstrates that the remaining designated number of MBTA parking spaces has been mutually approved by the MBTA and the applicant. Twenty-three, all parking shall be constructed as shown on the zoning compliance plan revised dated eighth, eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Marking material advertising the rental of residential units shall include the parking limitations noted on the plan, zoning compliance plan, attached hereto and incorporated into this decision. Twenty-four, any wayfinding signage shall be renewed and approved by the town planner prior to implementation. Twenty-five, parking of on Old Driveway is controlled by the town and shall be limited to two-hour parking, enforceable by the police department or as otherwise determined by the Traffic Control and Regulations Committee. No overnight parking shall be allowed on Old Driveway. Twenty-six, the site will include five electric vehicle charging stations in the residential parking areas with necessary infrastructure, conduit, et cetera. Final locations to be approved by the town planner. Twenty-seven, the applicant shall ensure that signs, landscaping, and other features located with the site triangle areas of the project site driveway, intersections with Old Driveway and New Driveway, and all intersections within the project site are designed, installed, and maintained so as not to include the site line, lines of sight, two-point by the in height. All signs, and this is twenty-eight, all signs and pavement markings shall be installed, to be installed shall conform to the applicable specifications of the Manual on New forms Traffic Controlling Devices, MUTCD. All pavement markings in the public way shall be pyramoplastic. A final sign and pavement marking plan shall be brought, provided to the town for review and approved by the town planner prior to issuance of the first building permit. Twenty, twenty-nine, the applicant shall ensure that the property manager promptly remove snow window, snow windows located with the site triangle areas of the project site driveway intersections with the Old Driveway and New Driveway and all intersections within the project site that exceed three-point-five feet in height or that would otherwise inhibit sightlines, sightline plans must be included in the plan, plans submitted for endorsement by the planning board. Thirty, snow storage areas have been designated on-site. The applicant shall ensure all maintenance personnel are informed of their locations. When on-site capacity is exceeded, an off-site location shall be used in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws. Twenty-one, no drive-through service or windows shall be permitted now or in the future for building F without further written approval of the planning board. Thirty-two, South Lane shall be designated as one-way into the site. There shall be no left turn from Old Driveway into South Lane. Appropriate marking shall be provided by the applicant. Thirty-three, the applicant shall design and instruct two pedestrian-activated rectangular rapid clash and beak to cross the Old Driveway at the center crossing location that serves the walkway situated between Building B and C and at North Road. Pedestrian crossing warnings signs shall be installed at all crosswalks across Old Driveway. These RRFBs shall be completed prior to the issuance of the first certification for the project, a certification of occupancy for the project. The applicant shall install radar speed feedback signs at one location to be confirmed by the town engineer, town planner, police department, on New Driveway. These signs shall be installed prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy of the project. Thirty-five, the applicant and works property manager shall become a mass rides employer partner to facilitate implementation of the Transportation Demand Management, TDM, program. Thirty-six, the applicant shall implement and maintain a TDM program for the project that shall include specific measures to encourage the use of alternative modes of transportation to single occupant vehicles by residents and employees of the project. Thirty-seven, the applicant shall conduct a road safety audit, RSA, of the Citroen Road Reef Chief Justice fishing highway, Free Egg, Country Way, New Driveway, and Corinth St. Road with Y twenty-three, following the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Mass. Doc. standards, conducting an RSA prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the project. Results of the RSA should be provided to the town for review prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Thirty-eight, the applicant shall review traffic signal timing of the New Driveway Old Driveway intersection on or before achieving sixty percent occupancy of the residential component of the project and shall undertake the necessary review and analyses to determine if adjustments to the traffic signal timings are necessary to accommodate the resulting change in traffic volumes and/or distribution of traffic on the intersection approaches. To the extent that it is determined that adjustments are required to the traffic signal timing, the applicant shall design and implement the timing changes subject to the review and approval of the town. Thirty-nine, the applicant shall prepare design plans for the reconstruction of Old Driveway between New Driveway and Stockbridge, road to include the rehabilitation payment service by means of removal and replacement of a wearing horse in a manner that this is acceptable to the Citroen Department of Public Works and conforms to these standards as well as Mass. DOT construction standards. The improvement shall include the installation of new signs and pavement markers within the limits of work. These improvements shall be constructed by the applicant and shall subsequently complete prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy of the project with the completion and subsequent acceptance of the improvements by the town within six months thereafter. Forty, control of density fill will be required for excavations within the Driveway. Forty-one, proposed curving along Old Driveway shall be granted either reuse or install in a granite curve. Any damages to the existing sidewalk shall be repaired in kind, full with, with life materials. Forty-two, the applicant shall be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of the newly constructed sidewalk between North Road to South Lane on Old Driveway on East Side between All Snowy removal. The applicant shall be responsible for maintaining all parking pavement markings in Old Driveway. The applicant, forty-three, the applicant has agreed to contribute the sum, sixty thousand dollars, to fund a municipal study of the off-site traffic and pedestrian improvements and to fund in part traffic and pedestrian improvements in the Great Greenwich area. If applicant shall provide such funds to the town prior to commencement of construction, funds shall be placed in an interest-bearing account in the expenditure of funds approved at the town administrator after consultation with the town planner, director of planning and development, and the DPW director, all of whom must occur. Forty-four, trash management shall be in, trash management shall be in the dumpster enclosure located and shown on site plan sheets C dash seven and C dash eight as follows: One, north of Building A, between Buildings B and C; Two, south of Building D; Three, north of Buildings F; and Four, north of Building E. All dumpster enclosure locations shall allow for easy movement of trucks with minimal pedestrian conflicts. Forty-five, loading and delivery activities shall be coordinated by the applicant and/or afterwards property manager and shall be limited to off-peak traffic periods. In no instance shall the staging of delivery vehicles block the travelway or impede pedestrian or bicycle travel without prior approval of Citroen Police Department. The implementation or use of parking spaces along Old Driveway for loading activities shall require prior approval of Traffic Rules Regulations Committee. The initial requirements shall include, A, three parallel spaces located on Driveway shall be restricted loading zones between the hours of nine AM to eleven AM. There will be no loading between peak traffic hours of six AM to nine o'clock AM and four o'clock PM to seven o'clock PM, Monday to Friday. The loading area used for Building A on-site shall be restricted to non-peak traffic hours and limited to step bands of blocked block trucks only. The applicant shall manage the use of the loading area for Building A to ensure safe access. All tenant movements shall be scheduled on dates and times that minimize conflicts with peak traffic areas on Old Driveway. Forty-six, all electrical, telephone, cable, and cell phone utilities shall be located underground. Forty-seven, except for the town-owned segments of the sewer and water line, all utilities including stormwater drainage system shall be maintained with the applicant according to the operation and maintenance manual. The stormwater drainage system dated before eighteen nineteen by Horsey, Litten, Inc. Affordability. Forty-eight, all affordable units shall meet the requirements for inclusion in a subsidized housing inventory through the state's local initiatives program to lift. Forty-nine, according to section five sixty point seventeen of the zoning bylaws, the number of one and two-bedroom affordable units shall be in the same proportion as the market rate of great units. Four affordable units shall have one bedroom and eight shall have two bedrooms. Fifty, the affordable unit shall be constructed simultaneously with all market rate units. A final certificate of occupancy will not be issued for any residential dwelling without the affordable units being ready for occupancy. Fifty-one, the applicant shall be responsible in preparation of a local action units application for the affordable units to be submitted to DHCD by the municipal, municipality chief elected official. Forms and assistance will be available from the planning department. Basic and public benefits. Fifty-two, an erosion control and site preparation plan with formulary sequence, sequence of construction has been provided. The plan shall be updated and provided to the board prior to screening or pre-construction meeting and prior to commencement of construction. The plan shall be in compliance with the NPDES permit plan and its stormwater pollution prevention plan. Fifty-three, the applicant has indicated that the project will not be phased and construction of its six buildings will be done simultaneously, provided however that completion of the buildings may occur at different times and the applicant may seek a certification of occupancy for each building upon completion. The project shall be constructed according to the applicant's proposed construction frequency, which shall be provided to the town planner prior to construction and scheduling of the construction conference. Environmental conditions, noise, and dust. Fifty-four, site noise levels shall conform to the Mass. DEP's Division of Air Quality Control Noise Policy. A baseline condition shall be taken and submitted to the town planner prior to commencement of any construction activities. Fifty-five, the applicant shall follow all regulations under the Mass. Department of Environmental Protection, three-ten CMR seven-point-zero-zero, air pollution control seven-oh-one, general regulations to prevent air pollution, and three-ten CMR seven-point-oh-nine U-dust odor, construction, and demolition, per three-ten CMR seven-point-oh-nine U-dust odor, construction, demolition. Water must be used to prevent excessive emissions of particulate matter throughout the construction project. Landscape and site amenities. Fifty-six, the lands, the applicant shall obtain approval of the planning board through the town planner if minor changes from the plan and/or details are needed for lighting, signage, painting materials, fencing, or landscaping. Material selection shall be provided to the town planner for review for performance through plans prior to installation. Fifty-seven, a separate sign permit shall be required for building department and restanding signs. Signs shall be fully located on the applicant's property and shall not block sightlines for traffic entry egress from the site. Fifty-eight, a final full planting unit state plan, including full details of the bio-retention planting and ID screening, shall be provided to the town planner for review ten days prior to the start of construction. Fifty-nine, the applicant shall view reasonable efforts to preserve the six existing trees on the east side of Old Driveway as shown on the plan. Twenty, if the trees cannot be preserved, then they are to be replaced with a minimum of four inch caliper trees to match the west side of the street. Sixty, a photometric lighting plan, all lighting details shall be provided, lighting prior to endorsement. All lighting fixtures shall be shielded, do not shed light onto offending properties. Uplighting is not recommended, architectural design. Sixty-one, the building shall be constructed in accordance with the architectural elevations submitted for the project. The quality of materials, construction, and colors shall not substantially deviate from those shown on the elevations and discussed during the opening without review and approval of the planning board. Sixty-two, all proposed uses and functions of Building A, B, and Building F shall be as proposed and shall be approved and inspected by the necessary town departments and boards, including but not limited to Board of Health, Fire Department, and Building Department. Sixty-three, the final building permit stamped by a registered architect shall be provided to the planning department prior to scheduling the pre-conference, pre-construction conference for review for consistency with the elevations and renderings described in Condition One and zoning compliance plan. If plans appear inconsistent, approval by the planning board will be required. Sixty-four, a certification shall be provided by the architect prior to certification of occupancy that the building as constructed is in substantial compliance with approved plans, required prior to scheduling the pre-conference, pre-construction plans. Sixty-five, the applicant shall provide a draft document to include a statement of driveway drainage system sewer walkways through the site, landscaping, and other common areas shall be followed by the applicant and shall be maintained by the applicant and/or MBTA and shall not be maintained by the town. The driveway drainage system walkways at the site, landscaping, lighting, stormwater leaching system, and other common areas shall be inspected, maintained, and repaired by the applicant and/or MBTA, which shall also be stated in the note of commitment. B, a requirement that one maintenance of the drainage system, pedestrian walks, parking driveways, and landscaping shall be in accordance with the operation and maintenance plan approved by the planning board's consulting engineer to provisions of snow removal and maintenance in ready condition through the winter of all being of a pedestrian waste that's been provided. Three, a description of the required annual maintenance of the driveway, parking areas, walkways, landscaping, lighting, and other common amenities. C, a table of number and general location of parking spaces assigned to each unit. B, the operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning board as a standard on the darn unit. The applicant, sixty-six, shall obtain all necessary tools for the use of town sewer prior to scheduling a pre-conference, pre-construction conference. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the office expense. Installation of all sewer mains and furnaces shall be performed according to the specifications of the DPW Sewer Division. Copies of all necessary approvals shall be provided to the planning board. Sixty-seven, a determination of adequacy of the existing water service for the proposed use shall be provided by the applicant to the DPW and town planner for their approval prior to scheduling a pre-conference, pre-construction conference. Installation of all water mains and furnaces shall be performed according to the specifications of the Water Division, DPW Water Division. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the applicant's expense. Sixty-eight, prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide to the planning board, A, copies of the recorded special part of the plans, B, a check to cover the cost of inspections by the town's consulting engineer, D, shall include at a minimum inspections of subdivision rules and regulations section nine point zero for the driveways slash roads, parking areas, stormwater management systems, water systems, sanitary sewer systems, new curbing, retaining laws of erosion, and dust control measures, as well as any specific requirements contained herein which may require review and/or inspections by the town. The specific amount shall be provided by the planning department based on the consulting engineer's estimate, shall be subject to amendment from time to time, and shall be supplemented by the applicant as requested by the planning department. Copies of NCDES permit plan, permit include Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWIP. The SWIP must be submitted to the planning board at least fourteen days prior to any land disturbance. D, a construction schedule including approximate dates, installation of erosion control, and other site protection slash stabilization, construction of buildings, and applicable items of the subdivision rules and regulations section nine oh, and E, a type and amount of security reasonably satisfactory to the planning board to cover the satisfactory completion of off-site infrastructure improvements on any town properties, including the layout of the new Driftway and old Driftway, including roads, drive, driveways, parking, drainage, water, and sewer utilities, landscaping, crosswalkways, radar signage, lighting signs, fences, and trash enclosures shall be provided by the applicant. The amount shall be based on the applicant's contractor's estimates of the cost of these items reviewed by the town's consulting engineer and shall be approved by the planning board prior to the pre-construction conference. The type and amount of security may be reduced based on completion progress with approval of the board. Required prior to the start of construction. Sixty-nine, within three calendar weeks prior to the applicant's notification to the town planner that intends to commence work, commence any work on the project site, a pre-construction conference shall be held with the applicant, their representatives, their engineer, site contractors, the town planner, town engineer, and other DPW representatives, etc. The police department, the planning board's consulting engineer, and other representatives of the town as the board needs necessary. A list of all contractors, all contract contacts, including names and telephone numbers, shall be provided to the planning board, DPW and police department. At least one telephone contact shall be available twenty-four hours per day in the event of an emergency. Seventy, the property lines of the subject property shall be marked or flagged in the field under the direction of a surveyor, a notification given through the town planner and consulting engineer, a minimum of three business days prior to the start of construction. Seventy-one, a stabilized construction entrance, consults, as shown on the plan sheet C dash four of eighteen of the drainage development permitting plans must be installed prior to any earth disturbing activities on site, including but not limiting to clearing and grilling. Construction fencing shall be required as necessary to comply with federal, state, and local laws. Required during construction. Seventy-two, construction work shall not be in prior to seven a.m. with days of eight a.m. on Saturday and shall cease no later than seven p.m. Interior work may be allowed up until ten p.m. on permitted days. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal slash federal holidays. Seventy-three, inspections and observations made according to the SWIP shall be submitted to the board within forty-eight hours after the inspection or review. The board reserves the right to require the consulting engineer to visit the site weekly or as often as necessary during construction. Seventy-four, all earth moving disturbance operations shall occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place and approved by the town planner or the town's consulting engineer. Such control measures shall remain in place until the board's consulting engineer determines after consultation with the town planner the danger of erosion or sedimentation or risks. It is the applicant's affirmative responsibility to ensure the maintenance and management of all stormwater control measures at all times during construction to ensure there are no increases in stormwater flow velocity or volume to affluent properties at any time. Seventy-five, construction activities on the site shall conform to the town of Citroen General Bylaws. Seventy-six, no parking or unloading, unloading of old Driftway slash new Driftway shall be permitted during construction unless approved in advance and controlled at the same time by the police department. Construction vehicles shall use designated construction access. Seventy-seven, the applicant shall notify the town forty-eight hours in advance of any significant equipment and construction material arrival to the site which may cause a safety hazard or material disruption of the public way such that a police detail is necessary to ensure safe passage. Any police detail required is of the expense of the applicant and to require the police department to track it if necessary. Seventy-eight, the applicant shall not allow any large construction equipment or trucks to stage or idle on public roads and shall not allow such equipment or trucks to idle on site prior to seven a.m. Police details may be required for construction access or work within the layout of the new and old Driftway. Seventy-nine, the applicant shall provide the town with roofs, construction trapal used so that a safety hazard or material disruption of the public way and peak safe passage, a police detail would be obtained by the applicant at its expense. Eighty, construction activities shall be conducted in a workmanlike manner at all times. Blowing dust or debris shall be controlled by the applicant for stabilization, letting down other proper storage and disposal methods. Eighty-one, no use of hydrants, on-site or adjacent roads offsite is allowed for construction use. A hydrant is available at the water treatment plant for construction use. Eighty-two, in an effort to reduce noise levels, the applicant shall keep all equipment and emulate the sounds from structures our site and proper work order under working order through regular maintenance. Eighty-three, construction of the proposed driveways slash roads, parking, site drainage system, and water and sewer systems shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer who shall certify in writing to the planning board at the completion of the project that the driveway, roads, parking, site, drainage system, and water and sewer systems will be constructed in accordance with the plan. This certification shall be accompanied by as good plans showing all site utilities, ratings, signs, and stamp by a professional surveyor and supervising professional engineer. The as good shall be reviewed by the town planners by the town's consulting engineer for compliance with the design. Eighty-four, blast study if necessary shall be conducted according to all necessary permits and all requirements of the required permit. Required prior to issuance of occupancy permits. Eighty-five, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board and building commissioner are satisfied that the driveway, roads, parking areas, and installation of necessary utilities is in full compliance with the plan and the special permit. Nothing herein shall be constructed so as to preclude the applicant from obtaining certificates of occupancy for some of the buildings prior to other buildings. However, safe pedestrian vehicle and public access, public safety access egress shall be required prior to the issuance of such certificates. Administration. Eighty-six, all time periods referenced in this document for completion of conditions shall be told in case any appeals are taken. Eighty-seven, this special permit shall run with the land and shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within one hundred and twenty days of expiration of the appeal period or such extension of that time period granted by the planning board following approval of the special permit. The applicant shall provide proof that the special permit was recorded to the planning board. Eighty-eight, the planning board may in its discretion waive or modify conditions of the special permit at a duly called meeting of the planning board if the board determines that such a waiver or modification is insignificant and does not materially adverse effect the total purpose of this special permit decision. Eighty-nine, this special permit shall last for two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use of construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter forty A, Section nine. Ninety, the following plan sheets of mixed-use developments, special permit plan shall be reported at the Bridge Street deed, including sheets one through six, eight through eleven, and in condition sheet. All construction work shall be done in accordance with the plans. Ninety-one, all construction work shall be done with the permits, in accordance with the plans. I move to close the Republican.
Wait a minute. All right, let's come back and we start. Second.
I second your place. Discussion.
Discussion, go for it.
I don't know if you guys had anything as well, but why don't we just start from page eleven? On item, I promise I'm not going through all ninety-one.
Oh, thank God.
But a number of places we've referenced, revisions through eight, eight nineteen, which is today. And I don't know if those are revisions that change things. Are those things that we've seen?
No, we got them all a lot of times.
They came in today?
No, they did not come in today. They just dated today. They were submitted, the architects were submitted about a week ago, but all the architects already dated eight, eight, eighteen.
Okay. I just want to know if we had anything that came in today?
No, we did not have anything come in yet.
Number eight, stop me, you've got something for.
I can start on number one. The word Massachusetts in the middle of the page after the area of the re-bush Citroen Mass that A needs to capitalize and then second to last sentence, I think is a capitalization, any additional abbreviations. These are the ones that I saw, I just need to be capitalized because it's the start of a new sentence.
I think that's actually, we should just say, I guess abbreviation, should say "and" any additional abbreviations. Because this is kind of a long sentence.
Yeah, it's kind of wrong.
So we should say "and" any additional, yeah. I think you're correct.
And there's also, my camera wrote the new most wrong.
Oh.
So.
You'll pick some.
Yeah, I'll pick some.
Okay. So, item six, last sentence, I think we should put foot sign or put what on the end of thirty-three point eight and four, thirty-four.
What?
Thirty-three point eight feet, right?
Elevation of thirty-three point eight.
Eight what? Inches?
Above mean.
Yeah, it's not inches, I mean it's.
Feet.
It should be thirty-three eight feet above mean.
Yeah, I just want to get, thirty-three point eight is just kind of hanging out there.
Which would, usually when you say thirty-three, elevation thirty-three point eight, that's kind of what's understood by me.
Item eight, this is a question for you guys, but it says you're going to maintain the MBTA parking areas, is that right?
We can't hear you over here, okay?
Me too. Oh, I'm sorry. Item number eight, it says that they are going to maintain the MBTA parking areas.
We're going to maintain, I think that we're, I guess there goes the speculation, they're going to be doing the snow removal in their, remember, site, there's a line that's something out of the plans where MBTA does the snow removal, do the snow removal, so we have five.
But you're not repairing the parking areas, are you?
When we do construction of the site, we commit to basically repairing and paying for anything else.
Initial, the initial, you're not doing ongoing.
Maybe it's really the MBTA, it's kind of part of the, it's a little, but it's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I just, I think what this sentence is really talking about is ongoing maintenance of repair of driveways and all of that. I just, I just want to make sure that I understood it was repairable for things. And you guys will take care of the construction, you get it all in shape.
Construction, get it back up to shape, and then after that point, they're.
They're responsible for their services.
And there's, it's designated on our plan to MBTA.
You could probably put initial maintenance on in a parenthetical remark for the MBTA parking area.
Yeah, right.
Initial maintenance or repair.
Yeah, initial maintenance repair.
Initial maintenance and repair all way of the MBTA parking area.
That's a parenthetical comment after the MBTA parking areas.
So it only applies to that. On item number eleven, I'm just trying to make sure I read this right. It talks about weekly written reports shall be submitted, is it by the applicant or to the applicant? Who's submitting weekly reports?
It's the UNFAN inspector. So it actually does.
Okay. So this is the inspectors', this is our inspector's report.
Our inspector will submit reports to.
To everybody. Okay, I just wanted to put it up. I think I'm going to look at item nineteen, page fifteen, actually nineteen F. And this says it's going to, that the fee is going to be paid prior to any water use for the site. Is that, this applies to, first of all sewer, is that, is it prior to any sewer?
Direct from the DPW, direct his mouth.
Prior to any water.
That's what he told me.
Yeah, so that means like faucet, I'm not sure I understand. There will be water use during construction, right? So they, they need to pay it. I mean, are you guys clear on what you would have to pay?
We thought we'd pay it for the, basically the completion of the construction, but he's insisting we pay.
He told me, that's exactly what he said.
All right, well, I will change it then if you guys figure it out in a second.
Well, basically, you won't pay it until somebody flushes it twice, please. Are any water use, which.
Water.
Water into the.
Yeah, it might be any water use on the site other than construction use.
Well, you can't use any town water for construction, so.
Right, you can't, it's a special.
Right.
Right.
Item thirty-nine, fourth one again, I think it is instead of this.
Yeah.
I don't want to interrupt, item thirty-seven, on the roadway safety audit. That's supposed to be like post-construction conditions?
Yes.
And if you have it before the first certificate of occupancy, I think it meant the final certificate of occupancy. Sometimes they've done like halfway through a project, sometimes they've done a year after completion, but it would make sense, final certificate of occupancy, that way you'd know what the impact of the project was.
Jim Dirk reviewed this and he didn't, he didn't comment on that.
But it doesn't make any sense to do an audit before you.
Before you have any traffic.
Right, right. Yeah, because it's a post.
If you want traffic from, from the people using, so, right?
That's right. It would make a lot more sense if it was final. It would make a lot more sense if it was final.
All right, I can verify with him tomorrow.
Okay.
Can you go back to item thirty-two? There should be no left turn.
Which number again?
Thirty-two, there should be no left turn from Old Bridgeway into Southway, I thought that was the old left here, but no left turn to the out of here.
From Old Bridgeway?
To Southway next to One Way.
If you're coming south on Old Bridgeway and you want to turn left into Southway, you'd have to...
I think it's from Southway into Old Bridgeway.
Yeah, the tree guards.
From Southway, yeah.
Well, I think, I think we did change to restrict, and this would be a question for VHB to confirm, but to not allow left turns into Southway because of the location of the crosswalk being shifted and to avoid the history and particular conflicts where existing crosswalk is in the location of New Southway, I think that is correct, that's right, because of the location of the crosswalk.
Is that where the parking lot comes out to?
Is with back door.
Yeah, so that probably makes sense.
I think it's correct.
It also is yellow, which is all left out of, you can't exit out of Southway.
That's right, I knew it was one way going or right.
I, I think your point on thirty-seven makes a lot of sense, because we really don't want to do the audit until we have good traffic flow. So on forty-three, the funds shall be placed in an interest-bearing account with expenditure funds for this said purpose. You get that? And then I note that the connotation, town administrators consulting with the town planner, the plant director of planning in doubt, and DPW director, all of whom must confer with him, all of whom would work for him. So I think maybe we ought to have a planning board in there.
It says town?
No. No, it's just, it's so that the funds can't be, the director of DPW can't go out and expend the funds any way he wants.
Right, that's what we do.
That's, it's a check and a balance, I hear.
Right, all I'm saying is, the administrator's concurrent with all the people who work for him, that's not really a check and balance.
No, but if one of the three, if the town planner or the director of planning in doubt, and don't agree, then the money can't be spent.
Right. I think it's an uncheck, so, we just don't want it.
I guess you don't see what I'm talking about.
What are you talking about?
This doesn't really affect, that's all, so, whether I want to work it out, it's okay with us.
Yeah, we'll do it out later. We will.
Yeah.
Where else?
So, in my opinion, we ought to say plan board.
Where do you want to put it?
What's that?
Where do you want the plan?
Just add the concurrents of the, you know, add the planning board to the list of those who have to concur.
Yeah, I find that good idea, she knows nothing about it.
Item seventy-one, this was really a question I asked earlier, that, I don't know if you think the conclusion is, are you guys intending to fence the site during construction?
The whole site?
Yeah.
The construction site?
Yeah, the construction site, yeah.
I think we're...
To live in access...
To build access for cars, yeah.
Well, not just cars, but like curious people and that kind of stuff. So you'll have construction fenced in.
Right, we have, we retain fifty markets, which is...
Yeah, I think that was, the site itself has to be fenced.
Yeah, I was thinking, state, you know, the fire block, yes, it's actually for excavation.
Then where the contractor will have their own insurance, just want to be sure it's signed into this.
On number eighty-five, I think it says, in full compliance with the approved plans and any other requirements of the special permit? Says there are other sort of inspection requirements that I don't think are mentioned in your short list here.
In full compliance with the approved plans and special permit.
You think that gets it?
Yeah, I mean, because if they don't comply with the special permit and plans, they're not going to get a subjective occupancy unless they've come in and gotten some type of change approved.
Okay, well, I guess, I was looking at how you had it split out, that the approved plans are part of the special permit, right, so, I'm trying to figure out how you, why you split those two out, I guess. Because if they have to comply with the special permit, approved plans are part of it.
So do you want to just save the special permit?
I was really asking what the purpose of the split out was here. If it's a distinction without a difference, then it can be different, if that's how you want to do it. Do you have any other changes?
Ben?
I had a couple of things that are not necessarily wordsmithing things, more content. So one of the things I was thinking about actually the last couple of tables, throughout our dialogue, you have affirmed your commitment to kind of green building and sustainability. So I was just wondering if you potentially, and I, I know Karen captured that in kind of the narrative for the, for the decision, but there isn't really anything in the findings or the conditions about that, so I was wondering if you potentially amenable to adding a condition of, like that, refer to that. And I would propose that the, if you were, I would propose that the, the section that would best be suited, maybe the, on page twenty, there's a section on architecture and design. And I thought that just a draft wording could be something like, the building materials and construction specifications shall be in accordance with accepted green building or sustainability standards with the goal of achieving LEED Silver Certification, something along those lines, but I mean, a margin is thrown in there.
I don't know, yeah, I don't, I think we do, for instance, we try to achieve green Silver.
Yeah.
I don't know with the materials and...
Probably, right. But would that be something that would potentially fit into this section?
We would say we would, something like that.
Okay, and I, and I guess if you guys, Karen can kind of coordinate, I don't know if it does cause the rest of the...
I don't know what, I don't know what the rest of the language, we need to be careful with that language, I don't know what...
Again, I haven't, I literally just drafted this down right now, so, it was just something that was on top of my mind, but that would, that would be great, because I think that this actually...
I think you said we would, we would attempt to, reasonable length, it's due to a LEED Silver Certification.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think just that would be good to capture, because I think that could be really, I think this would be potentially the first certification of that nature in the whole town search.
Okay, yeah, I don't think that'd be...
We can ignore it. Okay.
But we could try to achieve, basically, these levels would achieve, so, etc.
Yeah, that's all, just something that's in here, it doesn't have to...
Bill, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
No, double tap?
So, is that what we're adding, the reason?
I have one, one other thing, and it's, I think, I think I know the answer, but one thing I thought once is how traffic flow and commuter parking is going to be managed during construction, and I think the answer is probably that that's more between you and MBTA, but I didn't know if that's something that anyone felt should be somewhat added in here at all.
Really not, I mean, we asked for your easement document that's covered there, plus they have to, they have to provide fifty spaces to the MBTA during construction.
Right, yeah.
So they're going to have to show that on some type of, you know, construction plan that they themselves work out.
Right, yeah, I guess more what I was looking for in the planning board's side was that the construction process will not in any way serve as a hindrance to the parking for commuters as required by the MBTA, if you're agreeing with them.
It's tricky, because there might be certain days when, I mean, we're going to manage with the town commuters.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, I don't think it needs to be a formal condition, it's just reiterating that between the MBTA and the police department.
I think maybe time, if you were just waiting, this, I don't know which that out, they have some checks, so, I mean, but you have, you have applied access.
Okay. You're going to have to sort of manage time back too, just like right in front of them, six to, six to nine or something like that, in the morning and order.
Yeah, you have an overlap, you have an overlap with construction status, except...
Work with the MBTA and the notifications department as well, but they'll have a work upon it.
I don't think much parking is traffic if it's into communal, if you're doing something on the street, you have liveries or something like that.
That has to be...
Off, peat, picket, and so on.
I just have one additional comment on number fifty-three, at the end of the first line, it says construction with, and I think it should be construction of, it's six buildings. And noted in number fifty-five, in the second line, there's a colon where I think it should just be a period at seven oh one.
Is it second, what was it, second to you?
It's on number fifty-five, second line, seven point oh one instead of seven colon oh one.
Fifty-two, it says oh two.
What? Number fifty-two, it says, um...
Second line?
The third line, it says, prior to scheduling. The app should be updated by the line to the board prior to true scheduling of the Thank you, Les.
Number six, the app shall obtain endorsement of the planning board for the mixed-use special permit, endorsement of the plans, that's going to be six first line.
The app can show endorsement of the planning, of the planning board. What, do you want change there?
Something just doesn't make sense on that sentence, the app should obtain a, or plan endorsement from the planning board for the mixed-use, the app should obtain plan endorsement from the planning board for the special permit within ninety days. It just didn't make complete sense there. Instead of endorsement, I like the endorsement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that works too.
Anything else, people? Karen, we have a possession, eight to number two. Or anything else? All right, Karen, we have motion and a second.
Second is amended.
As amended. All those who approve this special permit, please signify on second.
Aye.
Two and a half, I move to close the public hearing in a second.
Second.
All clear?
Aye.
You're done.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us, thank you for being here.
Hey, Anthony, you don't want to... Went right all the way.
I didn't screw up.
I, I do want to, to add one thing, John said, the process been long, and we all want to be sure, but I must say that the effort that was made on behalf of the committees in, you know, the son of the effort, debated the investment project, and so we've said that a few times, we've been quite, and being pushed over for LEED qualification and things like that made a difference, so I appreciate that.
We appreciate it, and we're looking forward to a successful project.
We absolutely.
There'll be danger there.
No, if this is exciting, this is a first, and some think this is a religion, or something happened, but I think it's great.
Make this one.
So it is. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right, who do we have that we can get three seconds to add again?
We have first, first stage.
Oh, my goodness, give them a go, thanks. Oh, my God, are they here?
Yes.
John, enjoy your walk time.
I'm on the last one for Belgium, so I'm actually going to miss most of that accent. Appreciate the approval there.
I know, you do, but I'm just...
Thank you.
Good to see you. Yes. Good time, you know? Everyone's nice. Very good.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Oh, you're still, you're still there.
All right, we need to move to Jim, it's been swell.
Thanks.
Gentlemen, greetings. Okay, we have first, you want to release lots nine and four?
Yes.
Okay, and we have two tons, it's like they're pretty close to completion, so that's the second system.
About, we're both, some time, unfortunately, my time, schools are putting a lot of restrictions for trucking, so...
They want your load.
Yeah, that's okay.
It wasn't on purpose.
Okay, so, Karen, they want water uses?
They want, they want water releases for lot nine and lot four. We've already renewed five lots, construction is commencing, they're going to be cleaning out basin four, they've, they've done, and they're going to need some real remedial cleaning in the basin two and basin, basin one may have done some remedial cleaning, may need more remedial cleaning. I guess the big question is, when is the second system ready to start?
Yeah, Ian, Ian, it's...
Yeah, he said three to four.
Three to four, we haven't, we haven't set a time yet, but we're going to line up the contract to take on.
And why is that?
Why is...
Why, again, she said that?
Well, there was no rush, because we don't need it until we go into the occupancy program, and that's probably four or five months down the road.
But this is the best time of year to be doing a base.
Exactly, we don't want to release everything until...
You've got a...
You have structures in place, right?
Well, that wasn't part of, I mean, I would like to find some easier way to get water releases without having to come back and deploy every time, because we can't, we can't, we don't know which lots we're going to use. When I first asked Karen for water releases, two weeks ago, it was, it was nine and fourteen, and the customer changed things. It's just the nature of the beast, you know? We have bond in place, we have funding for the system, the banks already, the money is there, and we're going to get started on it very shortly.
So when would you have it completed?
Probably three or four weeks.
So you're going to start three or four weeks, you're going to start in September?
I might start sooner, but it isn't that long, so.
And so you'd be done by early October? I'd like to see that happen, so we're not trying to build a dissection.
No, no, no. Proof, it's moving forward.
All right, how does the board feel about releasing lots nine and four?
Say that's the last thing, the septic system. Where are the sites are behind four?
Where are they?
Yeah.
Nine is up in basin four.
Okay.
And four is one lot from the first house on the left that's already up.
Okay.
All right, so you get lots nine and four, we'll release them. It's just, you're right, it's unfortunate that the septic system didn't really fully start.
Well, I understand. Sort of the way that we evolved, and again, it's locked in, we'll adhere to the policy, the trucking policies for this construction.
Those children safe. You will keep them safe, walking back and forth.
Well, the trucks are there when they're out there, so.
No, okay. All right.
So when, can I ask another question? If we're going to, if you're locked into, at this point, to release anything, I know you will release those too, but once we have the septic system finished, will you release the balance of the lots?
Anything left?
Oh, you've got a lot of lots.
There's a lot, I think, I think you really should see, let them get the basins cleaned out. There's a lot of stuff that's trapping water in there, and it just doesn't seem to be a hundred percent functioning.
Well, it's not going to stabilize.
It's not, it's not functioning.
Well, it is.
Hundred percent, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
Right, right, but that's mainly, it's not.
Right, and so I think you need to look in to see if those are fragmites growing in there. If those are fragmites growing in those basins, they should be removed.
I think we're going to just remove them anyway.
Fragmites in basin, I'm talking basin one, I'm talking in the drainage swale going to, down to basin two. And in the portion of basin four, because they're highly, highly invasive. And you don't want them there to ruin, ruin the function of your basins.
Okay. I mean, we have basically decided that they're coming in there.
Okay, I was told that they might stay in basin one.
Well, we thought, if you had, were in agreement that we'd leave them, but.
But I don't think you want a highly invasive plant in your.
No, no, I agree.
I'm going to accept Paul's share request as an area of nine M I L city community slash nine four. On purpose, states, flexible, open space development. Incorporated board are two eight two dot eight two, and endorse our four twelve two thousand eight two. On recovery dated four ten two thousand eight two, and quarter five fifteen two thousand eight two, and red party rush to ease. Info four nine eight zero zero eight nine one, as a board has provided in the amount of forty fifty thousand dollars. And then town plan a whole lot releases up to basin one, basin one. A free, a cumulative sediment, approved of the recorded lot releases is furnished to the town plan.
If you don't want that, I would rather you take it out.
I'm not sure.
I don't understand that as far as I agree.
This is what you're used to talking about, right?
Right, there's a cumulative sediment in the basin.
I'll find a reason there, but I think we also.
And get rid of the fragmites.
So could you read that again?
It says, "hold the lot releases up to basin four and basin one are free from accumulated sediment and proof of the recorded water uses is furnished to the town plan."
So we have to perform maintenance on already built structures, and you're going to hold up lots because of maintenance? I've got a contract on a piece of plan, we've got to start building the house along, right?
Well, give me lot nine.
Not according to that.
We don't, we're releasing lots nine and four, okay? Am I to understand that we're not going to release any more? Until both basins are, are you saying that we're not going to release nine and four?
I think that's what they said.
That's what that says, that we weren't going to, until the basin was clean, so it's up to you guys. If you want, if you want to give them the two lots, then it's not going to get any more till the septic system's done and the basins are.
Fine, that's fine, so it's last piece, so.
Just cross out.
But we still need the recording.
You still need to have a recording, right?
Recording.
Okay. All right.
And you could, should we put in here an affirmative block pieces? Done until?
I don't think, I don't think you need that.
You just want to do.
All right.
All right, is there a second as amended?
Second.
All of them. We've got you two lots, and we've got you working out two.
We should be, we should be finishing time for anybody else to come somewhere.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see if we can clean through the rest of us. We need to. Attention. Two minutes, I'm going to approve the new, for July eleven two thousand nineteen, if there's a second.
Yes.
Altha.
Aye.
Hampton, I'm going to approve renovation for forty-six dollars and eighty-one cents to double the maintenance of office supplies for four thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents to Merrill Corporation for the period view of Drew two forty-seven driveway. To double sharing for ten thousand dollars, unified from strong sector, from special permit condition. To the central public schools for a hundred forty dollars for the use of Bates dining common. To Merrill Corporation for three hundred seventy-five dollars for the period view of Deer Common. Six seven?
Second.
Altha.
Aye.
Okay. What is this? Hundred and forty dollars for the public schools?
It's for.
Janitorial services for master plan, maybe that's coming up on, if they are.
Yeah.
They've, they've already weighed the fees slightly, they reduced it from what it is, five hundred dollars. I don't know the actual deal, I know what it's in. All right.
People would produce for some.
Hold it down a board.
We think.
All right. Ladies and the force.
Well, the big, the big one is that this coming Tuesday, August thirteenth, which you guys were just talking about, we're having the public kickoff for the master plan, and it was first data gathering session. That's going to be at six thirty at the Gates Middle School Dining Commons.
And of course, they're having the first meeting of the water thing at six, at the same time.
At six o'clock.
At six o'clock.
I'll be there at six.
You'll be there.
I might come over there.
You'd rather come over there, please, I think that's a great idea.
I thought they were going to create a citizen board for the water side.
Well, you can ask that question.
Maybe that's what they're going to do at this point.
What's it going to do? All right, I don't have anything really to report because, what is the need of? Can't even help, and Bill, traffic rules, planning and development?
Yeah, Toh Brothers is progressing. I authorized them to go into phase two, they received the authorization today. Basin D has a large rock in it, but they've accounted, they, you know, they've made an acceptable solution. They carved out some more areas, so it has the volume, and that's all been calculated, et cetera. I think the rock actually kind of looks nice to myself. But our volume has been accounted for, so they have been authorized to go into phase two. They're going to be looking to get the trees cut before school starts and start, start some of the hauling.
They put a fence in it?
The fence is in.
It is in?
I've asked for a construction schedule, I'm supposed to get that tomorrow. I have the engineering period view funds for phase two, and I'm also having a second, another contract for additional services, which is, which the town administrator will be able to sign. So that way, I've been spending, we've been spending the money down, that way, now we can put the additional services from the additional monitoring into its own contract. And still, we have the money for the project.
The money's coming for the project.
The money's coming for the project. The Glen next time is going to be looking for a shortage reduction. We still are getting a lot of accessory loan special permits, A and R's. You'll be seeing a waiver for, cycling waiver for the public church on next time. Stubby Farm and Deer Common are looking to do their final subdivision stuff, Deer Common, they are supposedly paving this week. Stubby Farm, I mean, you carry the engineer on that, but they want to be getting their final top coat and the sidewalk's done too. And one question on the senior center you guys are really going to have to think about is, do you want the test pits now? In the engineering period view, we recommended additional test pits for the drainage system, and they maintain that they want to deal with our construction documents.
What is, what is R and D going to say about that?
Well, he said, that's a board decision.
So if they, if they do it, and everything works the way they expect, they don't need to do anything?
No, they just, they need to verify that we are above the seasonal high groundwater.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if they verify, if they do that during construction and verify that everything's fine.
Right.
If they determine that not, then they're going to have to stop everything.
That's correct.
And redesign.
That's correct.
Restore water system.
So do you want it done before you close your public hearing? Or do you want it done during, while they're going to construction documents?
I mean, if it were me, I would build it, I'd want it done now, so I know that when I got to do construction, I wouldn't have to bring everything to a screeching hall, right? That's the way I would do it, if they want to take the risk.
They say they'd do it, they would do it in construction documents, which.
To them.
They're right now, they're technically in design development stage.
Yeah.
So I guess they're permitting with design development drawings, and then they go into doing contract documents, and that's when they would do the test pits. But it's possible you have already proved it by then, so.
No, it hasn't been subject to the test pits being done and verified, right?
Do you want it done during the permitting process, or, or subject to a verifying later?
I'm confused about what you just said, you said they were going to do it when they're developing construction documents, that's before they've got approval to actually start construction.
No, not necessarily. Yes, yes, before they start construction, but not before necessarily they're through the approval process with you.
Right, and what I'm saying is, if we condition that, then they've got to come back. That's the issue, if they find a problem, then they're going to have to come back.
That's correct.
Right, so that's really their risk, right? If we condition it and say, you know, you have to come back and verify it, if everything's fine, then everything's fine, right? If it's not, then they're going to have to stop whatever they're doing and get on board agenda, present a revised stormwater plan. Is there any other impact beyond that?
Well, it'll just be the vulnerable conditions, you know? I'd like to talk to Mr.
I would suggest you have a conversation about that process, because they should understand that. If that's what they're asking for, they should understand their implications.
Okay. Also, I'd like to talk to, to Valia about moving that driveway. That supposedly the biotrans can't be in there, or it's moved to the rest of the hill. I don't quite understand.
I have no comments from the public. All right, I'll just, one more thing, yes, so. The warrant for the special town meeting is going to open on the twentieth, close on the third. There's going to be zoning, potential, there'll be zoning articles on it for the fall town meeting. We could do the schedule in one of two ways, could you schedule so that you have public hearing at the end of September? And you're allowed to continue in state in October? Or you just have, you're allowed to no continue in state, and you have it the first meeting in October for zoning.
Are we going to have a public hearing? This is what I meant to tell you as well. Individuals are coming in for three sixty-five chief justice, Christian Highway. They want to, the land is tied up, they can't subdivide it, they can't do anything to it. But they want to have the deep restriction removed, and they are going to go and remove a town meeting and ask town meeting to remove it. Do we need to have a public hearing on that or not?
No, thanks, Tom.
Okay.
That's a citizen petition or something, right?
Yes, they want, no, and they want the selectmen to do it, and the selectmen are coming.
So we have them right there.
Yeah, that's the one.
Right, so they'll be coming in on next meeting, and so the board's going to have to decide if they want to respond to that article. We are going to have a signed by law, and then potential revisions.
We have a what?
Sign, corrections to the sign by law.
Oh, who's putting, who's developing, is that what you're doing?
No, I'm not.
Oh, who's?
Town with this, the potential suit, acquired planning segment.
The planning department is working on it.
Oh, okay.
And then there are some corrections in the village, neighborhood district.
I would rather do it earlier, because it's close to the right there. If we have the time, September.
So you, you like.
I didn't even know we were considering the sound, the sign by law change, so.
You like the idea of having a time for a continued public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, before the warrant goes prepared?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to set, I'm going to set, I'll entertain motion to adjourn. Second. Altha.
Aye.